Yeah, straight up watching those, those kids go through the year. All the stuff we expose them to. Oh, let's do it.
Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to commence with the meeting. If you would rise for first take the gentleman, if you would, take your hats off, please. We're going to have to pledge of allegiance and a prayer.
Prayer. Who's praying?
Prayer. Of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
If y'all would bow with us. Dear Lord, we want to thank you for this beautiful day, the great weather we've been having. We want to thank you for the, this community that we live in, all the blessings you bestow upon us in this area. We ask that you look over tonight and guide us through this meeting, help us to do the right things. Please look over all of our first responders, our law enforcement, our EMTs, our fire and rescue, as they look out for us and risk their, their lives every day for us. We ask that you, uh, give everyone that took time out of their week to come here with us tonight, give them all a safe ride home from our meeting. All these things in Jesus' name we ask. Amen.
Jesus.
If you would, we're going to start the meeting. Uh, I'd like to, well, first I've got to read something, then we're gonna make a statement. When we have these meetings, we make every effort possible to do them in a professional manner. And when you're speaking to the board, if you would, come to the microphone and state your name and address. Anyone speaking has three to five minutes at the microphone, and then we continue on from there. The, um, for instance, the Remodel Place group has sent me a, a copy of who they want to speak, and we have it written down, and you'll be called as we come. If you would, try to be reasonable. We don't, we're not going to have out verse from the group for the crowd. That's what this is for. And I thank you all for, uh, biding and going by the rules. Thank you for that. Um, we have to read this every meeting. I'd like to take a moment to clarify that the planning commission is a recommended body to the Columbia County Board of Commissioners. The decisions made on rezoning of various requests tonight will be forwarded to the commissioners for final approval on May 2nd, 2023. If you wish to address the board of commissioners at their, at their meeting, please see Ms. Stoller, and she'll take your name. Okay, let's get started. First item on it, oh, we gotta have a motion for approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, actually, let's start with the, um, previous minutes.
We got ahead of ourselves. Approval of the minutes of the previous meeting. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor signify by raising your right hand. Now approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor with your right hands? Now, the first is only, uh, it's unfinished business, Mr. Butler.
There's a request for rezoning of property on Riverwatch Parkway and Roundtree Way, a total of three acres. Currently zoned R2. I look, looking to rezone to C2 general commercial, proposed car wash, and again postponed for the March 16th, 2023 meeting. It shows the location of the properties. Again, we're dealing with eight total properties, uh, looking to combine all those into one. It was the current zone of the property and currently zoned R2. I do have, again, some residential nearby. Whoop. I can't draw tonight. Residential is nearby to it as well. Again, you have some C2 and the other areas near, near the property itself. Show the real view of the properties. Also existing site. This is the round, or the Riverwatch Parkway side. This is the Roundtree Way side. And Roundtree again. And it shows the Platts on Roundtree Way, also the Platts, uh, for the Riverwatch Parkway side. So back, back, back in works, they presented conceptual plan, uh, for proposed car wash. Um, one of those, one of the items from that, we, uh, one of the, one of the things with staff is that we do have some concerns about, about the properties, uh, to the east and the west. Um, those, yes, those ones. Um, and how they're not being combined with the property, and it could hurt, hurt some of the, some of the development. Uh, we also have several variances that are before us tonight as well. Uh, so several concerns with that. Um, the applicant then took back those, those comments, made some adjustments to the plan itself. They've actually eliminated two of the, uh, the variances they were requesting, uh, but also shown kind of how this site could be, uh, how, how the site could be, could be developed, or how the sites nearby could be developed as well. Again, this does show on the corner there, it provides office space, um, and then also how the property on the, uh, west side could be combined with the other properties. Uh, we do, we do appreciate that. Uh, that was a, a good method of, of kind of showing how that can work. Um, again, we were not saying they couldn't be redeveloped, but again, it does show, you know, there is definitely the possibility of that. Uh, really our concern lies with the use itself. Um, it is an industrial use under our code. Um, and in terms of future development map, this is a mixed, a mixed-use activity center, um, and does anticipate more commercial uses, more perhaps residential, um, with some industrial on the periphery of the site, uh, of the activity center. I mean, um, in this standpoint, this is basically the, the middle of the, uh, of the activity center. Uh, due to that, and because of the use being considered an industrial use, we are recommending this approval of the request. That includes staff recommendation.
Does anyone here would like to speak for this issue?
Uh, Gary Simpson, 334 Holly Oak Way, Grove Town. I'm the developer. Uh, just to reiterate what Will said, uh, we've done our best to minimize the impact of the adjacent properties by redesigning the project, getting it down to one variance request, and did our best to conform to the C2 limited use zoning. Questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Anybody have any questions?
Are you, are you pretty intimate with the car wash component itself?
I'm, I'm currently building one at Costco.
Okay.
It will be my first.
All right. Have any idea how much noise it produces?
I, I don't. I saw the recommendation from Will talking about cars adling, but right there, you've got Riverwatch Parkway is where the building will be. Car is going by 45 miles an hour. I, I don't see a noise problem. Cars adling at the car wash.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir. Anyone here would like to speak against this issue? Yes, ma'am, if you come to the microphone.
Daniel, I live at 530 Roundtree Way. What's it going to do to our taxes? Are they going to go up, or?
I didn't understand what you said.
What, what will it do to our taxes?
I hesitate to answer that question because it's so, uh, Mr. Sterling, do you have any idea? I sense it sends you to make a man.
If I've had a pass, I could pass it back to you. That'd be perfect, but.
No, I, I, you know, any action on this particular, um, set of properties, uh, wouldn't directly have an immediate impact on any taxes of the adjacent properties. I mean, assuming that this were, um, rezoned to a commercial zoning district, it wouldn't change the zoning on your property, wouldn't change the use on your property. So the tax assessor would be basing their appraisals on what is going on in your property. It may make it more valuable in the, the secondary market in terms of selling it. It may not. That's something that you would have to test the theory on, but it doesn't directly have an, an immediate impact on your taxes.
Another thing is what kind of car wash is this? Is it like a put in your quarters and drive-through, or is it something nice like these sparkles, or?
A very upscale car wash.
Very upscale car wash. I'm worried about people being there all times of the night and disrupting the neighborhood.
Yes, there, hold on. Is there going to be a, is there a way to, is there going to be a game on the end?
You've got hours of operation.
Come to the morning. Nine to seven PM is the hours of operation.
Ma'am, let him step up with you, and he can answer that question.
Uh, hours of operation are nine AM, seven PM. I should bring him. Yes, ma'am. We're building one at Costco. You can, there's one at Costco across the gas station.
Okay.
I think what she's asking is, for clarification, it's got, it's a drive, it's a drive-through.
It's express model like Sparkle, Lulu's. It's that type.
So at nighttime, are you going to have cones across the entrance, or are you going to have a gate across the entrance that closes it off?
We're doing a gate at Costco, and I assume we'll probably do a, a gate there where no one can access the property.
There you go.
Malika Mitchell, 526 Roundtree Way. Um, I was wondering, would the entrance be on Riverwatch side, or would it be coming from both the Roundtree and the Riverwatch ends as that, um, intersection right there, turning onto Jamaica Way? There is a lot of accidents already, so increased traffic.
Answer that question for you.
So on the, if you look on that screen right there, we, we, we circled where the entrance is going to be, is on Roundtree Way.
So the entrance would be on Roundtree Way?
Yes.
Because that, um, the entrance, so as you come to the corner lot where the house is at Jamaica Way, there is a ton of accidents there. I live directly across, facing, um, Jamaica Way, and that's a huge concern to me, as we have school-aged children and the bus, and, you know, they ride the bikes and everything outside. So with a commercial property that's entering on the Roundtree Way sign, side means that they're going to be coming right past, past my house to the Jamaica Way entry back out on Riverwatch. That's a pretty good concern to me. And I wanted to also know, does it, is it going to affect our property value in the future? Like you said, we don't know if selling the house later on down the road, like, is somebody going to want to buy a house that a car wash is right there in front of?
I will say that activity creates activity. This or any other, uh, major thing comes there, it's going to improve your property values, I would think.
I mean, I don't know. I, I, I don't personally want to live in a house with a car wash in front of it. I want to live, that's why I chose the area for the resi, it's very secluded.
You know, obviously something's coming there.
Right. Right. Well, not, not when we bought the house two years ago.
I understand that, but with that open area and people wanting to sell, something's coming.
Right, right. Well, I was assuming maybe more residential stuff. We have a car wash just right up the road.
That land's worth too much money for it to be residential now. People are not going to pay it.
I, I mean, I understand that as well.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for your call.
Thank you.
Any more questions? I'd like to have a motion to accept or deny this issue.
Chairman, I make a motion to approve file RZ 23-03-05 rezoning from R2 to C2 at 4539, 4543, 4547, and 4551 Riverwatch Parkway, 525, 527, 531, and 533 Roundtree Way.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by raising your right hands. All opposed? Right hand. Thank you. Um, Mr. Sterling, the way he did that motion, that's going to cover all three of those issues, right?
No, not necessarily. You'll have to take them each.
He has to have a public hearing roll through.
Public hearings involved.
We need to start back at, at the B section then.
Yes.
So the next one's a variance, uh, to multiple sections. Uh, 98-98 lists lot structure requirements, size 139 buffers and screening, 147 H4B, 98-147 I3, property located off Riverwatch Parkway and Roundtree Way, looking to exceed the maximum building setbacks, reduce structural buffers, lot operation of car wash within 50 feet of residential use, and allow a drive-through. This location of the property, we've seen them before. Again, currently is that, current zone is, current zoning is R2. And here the real view of the site, the existing site, also from Roundtree's existing site, and the Platts on Roundtree, and also Riverwatch Parkway. Again, this shows the original concept plan, uh, from before. Um, they, they took it and revised it to not need, uh, 98-98 to list lot structure requirement variance or the buffer variance. Uh, what they did is they added a building here, and then also they move, they're able to move the, uh, the drive-through, of the drive-through further over to be able to hit that 30-foot buffer. So they no longer need those two buffers, or those two variances. Uh, they're still going to need the ones for the 50-foot separation between a drive-through and a residence. Um, again, we have the drive, the drive-through that's there. Um, not really any way to really get around that. Um, but again, it is, these are typically going to be less noisy than what we're typically going to talk about with a, a drive-through, right? Like a restaurant where you're making an order, and you have people, you know, talking back and forth. This is really not an issue from a noise standpoint. Um, the other one is for the, uh, the drive, the car wash itself has a 50-foot separation from property lines that are zoned residential. Um, no way to get around that one. Um, you have residential immediately adjacent to it. Um, so again, that's one that, um, is also included within this. Uh, since staff was, I recommend approval of the, of the, uh, zoning, uh, we're going to recommend this approval of the variance. That includes staff recommendation.
We have a motion to accept or deny this issue.
Mr. Chairman, we have to open up a public hearing.
Business. Anyone here, again, that would like to be far against this issue? Now. Have a motion to accept or deny B.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve file VA 23-03-06 variance to section 90-4147 H4B and 90-147I3 to allow operation of a car wash within 50 feet of residential use, and allow a drive-through on property at 4539, 4543, 4547, and 4551 Riverwatch Parkway, and 525, 527, 531, and 533 Roundtree Way.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify with your right hand. All opposed? Okay, Mr. Butler, we got C.
Yep, last one on this one. So this is a variation, um, properties we, we looked at before. Uh, section 98-96C Evans Town Center overlay districts have been a roll-up door face right away as they see glazing percentages. So we'll actually see the building, uh, so y'all can, I'll see what it looks like and see if he was telling the truth or not. This location of the property, this is zoning of the property, again, currently zoned R2, aerial view of the site, existing site from, uh, yeah, from Roundtree and also Riverwatch before, uh, Platts, and the conceptual plan. So what we're dealing with, if you can go to the next one, it shows a little better. So there are two roll-up doors on either end of the car wash. Um, there is no way for those not to face this right-of-way back here. And again, that right-of-way is practically not a right-of-way, but it is included in right-of-way, so we got, had to call it as such. Uh, really no concerns with, with that, uh, from our standpoint. Uh, the second one was for the building itself, uh, to exceed glazing percentages. Um, again, good-looking building, uh, looks to meet, um, pretty much all of the Evans, Evans Town Center requirements. Glazing may be one, they may be a little over that. You can have 25% on elevation. That may be a little over that for some of these. Um, again, not really a concern. We typically do waive glazing, uh, for a pretty high amount. Uh, but again, because we weren't, weren't recommending approval of zoning, we recommend this approval of this request as well.
Anyone like to make any comment concerning the item C? Have a motion to accept or deny this item?
Chairman, I make a motion to approve with condition for VA 23-03-07 variation to section 90-96C1 and C5 Evans Town Center overlay district to permit roll-up doors to face right-of-way and to exceed the glazing maximum on property at 4539, 4543, 4547, and 4551 Riverwatch Parkway, and 525, 527, 531, and 533 Roundtree Way.
Second.
All in favor signify with your right hand. All opposed? Sir, if you would, remove your hat for me, please. Thank you. Okay, new business. Mr. Butler again.
This is a massage operator's license for NNP Group LLC, DBA Total Thai Wellness, uh, from a relocation and massage operator's license to 105 Maple Drive, Suite 5. They meet all requirements of the ordinance, and staff recommends approval.
Anyone here that would like to address this item? Any questions? Have a motion to accept or deny?
Chairman, I make a motion to approve the massage operator's license for NNP Group LLC, DBA Total Thai Wellness to provide massage services at 103 Maple Drive, Suite 5.
Have a mo, have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by raising your right hand. Unopposed? Okay, Ms. Montgomery with Daniel Timber Creek.
Yes, sir. This is a request for a revision to the conceptual plan for Timber Creek located off Mulliken Road. Um, we originally saw this concept plan back in June of 2022. Um, it was subsequently revised earlier this year in February, um, and this is an additional revision, uh, to add some additional property to the concept plan. So this is the location of the site on kind of the west side of Mulliken Road. It is currently zoned R1 single-family residential, and the proposal is to develop the property under that current zoning. This is the existing conditions on the site. Um, there are environmental features on the property, um, as well as some, some fairly steep slopes. This was the approved concept plan from February of this year. Um, it has the four cul-de-sacs in the amenity area at the north end of the site. Uh, the revision adds additional acreage to the, the concept plan up at this north end, and does revise the road layout and removes that fourth cul-de-sac. Uh, they now have a, an additional entrance road out onto Mulliken Road, and the amenity area has been relocated slightly. Uh, they did increase the lot count from 48 lots to a total of 53 lots with this revision. Um, a couple notes, the amenity area is going to have to meet the requirements for community recreation in the county code. Uh, that does include a buffer, which is not shown, uh, currently on the concept, but that can be addressed through plan review. Uh, otherwise, the perimeter buffers as required are shown on this concept plan. Uh, it does assume that the property is not being mass graded. Um, if they do end up having to mass grade, they'll have to increase the buffer widths to 50 feet all the way around. Uh, this property, uh, is intended to have both public water and sewer, and they are showing the access points for both of those as well. And staff is recommending approval of the revision.
Anyone here would like to speak for or against this position? Any comments or questions from anybody here? Have a motion to accept or deny Timber Creek?
Chairman, I make a motion to approve the revised conceptual plan for Timber Creek located off Mulliken Road.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by raising your right hand. Unopposed? Okay, Ms. Montgomery, Highland, Highland Lakes.
Yes, sir. This is a conceptual plan for Highland Lakes West, Section 1, off William Fewe Parkway. And this is the location of the site. I mean, see, these are the existing sections of Highland Lakes to the, the north and the east of this property. Uh, this is all currently zoned R2, single-family residential, and is being developed under that zoning. And there are several conditions from that rezoning that they will have to comply with as they develop this property. Um, those are in regards to replanting of the buffers, as well as sidewalks and street trees throughout this project. Uh, this section is essentially an extension of three existing streets in Highland Lakes, um, continuing the grid pattern that is defined the rest of the neighborhood. Uh, the lots will have to meet the R2 standards, so we are looking at 10,000 square-foot lots here. Um, and they will have public water and sewer, which will be tied in from the, the rest of the development. Uh, this concept shows in a, a total of an additional 53 lots, and staff is recommending approval.
Anyone that would like to address this issue? Have any questions here? Like a motion to accept or deny?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the conceptual plan for Highland Lakes West, Section 1, located off William Fewe Parkway.
Second.
Second.
All in favor signify with your right hands, and is none opposed to this issue. Okay, we have a temporary use authorization, Ms. Mystery.
Yes, sir. This is a temporary use for an RV at 1,000 Madeleine Court on 2.84 acres, zoned RA residential agricultural. This is the location on the south side of Madeleine Drive. Zoning is RA. This is the aerial of the lot. A street view of the property. As you can see, there's an existing house on there. Um, this is the applicant's father's home. Um, it's heavily wooded, and the RV will be located so that it's hidden between the trees. Here's a, a photo of the RV. And this is the site plan showing where it's going to be located, so there shouldn't be any adverse impact to the neighbors. Um, the applicant is, uh, moving out of a rental property because the landlord, uh, came, came back early, uh, wanted to stay here for a little while while they, um, look for a, a residential lot to build on. And when they find one with, hopefully within the next few months, they'll actually move, apply to move the RV onto the new lot. Staff is recommending approval.
Any questions concerning this? Like a motion to accept or deny?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the temporary use authorization at 1,000 Madeleine Court.
Do we have a second? All in favor with your right hand, please. No opposition. Now we're getting to the public hearing part of this. First on the agenda is Mr. Butler.
There's a request for a, a major PRD revision out of 5,001 High Meadows Drive, revise building setbacks and lot configuration. This is location of the property off of William Fewe Parkway and High Meadows. This is the current zone of the property, and currently is an PRD. I have quite a few, a mixture of zoning around it. You have, uh, some PUDs in the south for Clary, uh, north and, or north and south, yes, more RA, and also across the street, more planning and development. This is a real view of the property. Also, the existing site, again, it is about finished with the construction, and the plat of the property. So the request tonight is to revise, uh, first of all, the building setbacks. Um, currently those setbacks are seven and a half feet. Uh, the request is to revise them to a five and a 10-foot. So essentially you'd have, one house could be at five feet, the house next door has to be at 10 feet. Whole separation of 15 feet overall. Um, part of that is due to the, uh, initial design of it. It has, have some issues with being able to meet the setbacks and still be able to provide the housing that's required with these different lot layouts. Um, so we have seen this type of request before. Um, staff is in favor of this reduction, uh, again, to make the site, you know, work a little bit better. Uh, the other thing is to change, you see on this, um, on this concept plan, uh, you have different lot layouts that correspond to these different, uh, different colors. So all the ones that are yellow, uh, which is the majority of the site essentially, um, are going to, are supposed to be a slide-by drive. Uh, the request is to be able to change those, be able to have a, a front access drive, like you typically see in a neighborhood. Um, or, um, 25% of those, um, will be able to have a slide-by if they can make it work based on market demand. Um, the ones that are not changing are the alley access homes, are the ones that are the, the kind of the blue color there, or, you know, that lighter blue. Um, so all of those will, will remain alley. So there's no, no reduction in that, in that, on that side of it. Again, with the PRD, we usually want to see, um, you know, a little more older type development with alleyways and more traditional development. Um, so again, not revising those, you know, really from our standpoint, really keeps it looking like a PRD, like it should. Um, also just to clarify, there, this connection point, uh, into Misty Woods Drive, um, that is not being made. Um, there's no change to that. We actually have a condition that says that previous conditions still apply, and that was one of those conditions. Uh, there is one that kind of modifies a previous condition as well that applied to the, those purple lots. That's more of a, kind of cleaning that up. Uh, there is one condition from water utility. Um, again, this site has already been pretty much developed. Um, the water lines are already in place. Uh, their front building setback will likely not work, uh, for a lot of, or not for a lot, but for many of those, um, those lots. So there's a requirement, those, all houses have to be 20 feet from that water line. Uh, from a future development standpoint, again, we're not changing the density. We're not, all we're doing is changing the, the building setbacks. I've been kind of adjusting some of the lots. Um, at the time, it was allowed to be a little more dense out there. We're not changing any of that. It's the, uh, current future development map. Do all, all of that, staff does recommend approval of conditions. Again, the one, uh, that I already mentioned, or, or mentioned both of these, but the one, uh, the, the conditions for RG 190502 still apply. The exception that the purple colored lots would not be required to use side loading layout. And again, water utility, no permanent structure or house to be located within 20 feet of a water line. That includes staff recommendation.
Anyone here would like to speak for or against this issue? Could you come to the microphone, please?
My name's Wayne Hodges. I live at 153 Misty Woods Drive. And he helped by saying that they wouldn't plan on joining on to our road. But my question is, right now, they cut down all the trees that was between the two subdivisions. And the lady that sold, Ms. Shields, that sold the land to the developer, along with Columbia County, agreed that that street was going to be a cul-de-sac. I went in there today, it's not a cul-de-sac. And to me, that should, it's kind of clear that. And to me, that should, it's kind of clear that intentions are putting a road in there eventually. So to me, what trees was cut down, whether to put pipes or whatever in, should be replanted. And and that road should be made into cul-de-sac per August 2019 contract with Ms. Shields, the developer in Columbia County. So that's mainly the thing we're we're concerned about is, is messing with our very peaceful environment that we got.
You answered that question, Mr. Butler.
You're saying there's a contract between the buyer, the seller, and the county?
Correct.
You have that contract?
I sure do.
That's it?
You don't, you haven't seen that before?
No, we're not going to see a private contract. I'm curious how, what it looks like. That is not a contract. This is our zoning letter. No, that's not a contract. I thought you meant we, we just entered into an agreement.
Oh, no. You entered into an agreement with Ms. Shields to sell the property. She, that was her contingency on selling the property, was to make sure, because she lived in Misty Woods. She didn't want to interfere.
That's what it says right there. The connection to Misty Woods Drive is not to be completed with the development.
That's, that's what we're, so why?
That is not to be completed.
My question is, why was all the trees cut down and a roadway put in there?
To put the water line in.
Okay, why wasn't, why wasn't anything replanted? And why isn't it a cul-de-sac there now?
I can't tell you why it's not a cul-de-sac. I mean, it's one of those, their whole intent was not to.
Right.
No.
Yeah, it is. You've read the paper. It's cul-de-sac.
The road will be a cul-de-sac and a car buffer installed with the development of the property, as in a cul-de-sac on their side. That's what that means.
Yeah, cul-de-sac, the development, they can't, it's got to be a cul-de-sac. But right now, y'all have got a straight road, like it goes straight into the subdivision.
So again, the cul, can you go back to another, is there a different one we can look at? The cul-de-sac is on, is on the, the development side. It's not on the Misty Meadows side.
On the development side?
Yes. See, see that little dot right there? That's what, that's what we're talking about.
Where are you, where are you at here?
That green dot.
Okay.
That, that's not, it's not supposed to be cul-de-sac on the Misty Woods side.
Right. It's supposed to be a cul-de-sac on the new subdivision side. That's what I'm saying.
Stub out right now.
And right now, it's a straight road that's just clear.
I think the applicant.
There's a plan on being joined in.
I'm finished yet, sir.
I mean, that's, I mean, it's, Collins Sense tells you that that's planned to be joined into. But if there is no plan.
There is no plan. That's one of the conditions.
Why didn't you plant the trees back that was in our subdivision?
Joe's behind you. He can probably lead to some of what, where they are in terms of the other development itself. Again, it's not completed yet. I mean, that's the whole thing.
Right.
I mean, it still says that their car buffer will install with development of the property. They haven't gotten to that point yet.
So y'all are planning on ordering?
We aren't doing anything. They're doing part of that.
You're going to put up a?
No.
A gate?
We stopped this section that they're talking about right there. Right where my red, by that red arrow is. We have not gone any further. There is a special stipulation with some of those lots on the end. It does say on the plan that it's supposed to be cul-de-sac. It's not there yet.
Oh, but you do have plans.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm going to follow whatever plan was approved by the county.
That's our concern, right.
Also, keep in mind, I'm not the original developer.
Well, that.
I'm just letting you know.
Right, but that don't have nothing to do with it.
I bought it from Mr. Sooty. But whatever the county has agreed to and approved before I even got involved.
Right.
We are committed.
Okay.
So we'll be fine.
No, it's fine.
I'm sorry you got all this. I wish I could have helped you sooner.
You seen all the cars coming through there. You know why we have something.
Between me and you?
We had ten, we had ten cars come through while we sitting there in the.
Oh, they're coming from Clary and.
Okay, all right, that's enough, y'all. Thank you.
I'll tell you who I am. I'm Joe Galeno, Vice President of Development for Columbia County Homes. 700 Evans Town Center Boulevard. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to, uh, address them. We're hoping to be able to get this through. This gives us a little bit more flexibility than the seven and a half, yet keeps the look of the fifteen feet between the homes. We're well aware of the twenty, excuse me, the twenty-foot set from the water meter, of the water main, excuse me, not the meter, the main. I intend to address that on the plat to ensure that that does not happen. Of course, if a builder accidentally does it, I'll make him take down the front of the building. He can move it, and that'll teach him not to do it again. If there's any other questions, I'd be more than happy to address them to you.
Thank you, Mr. Joe, for clarifying that.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right. Oh, my name is C.W. Hayes, and I live at 179 Misty Woods Drive. My lot has taken all the abuse since I started working. First thing they did is the pond that I, it's on my property and the neighbors on the High Meadows. And I keep it up and all, but, uh, the first thing it did, a clear pond, muddy overnight or over two or three days. And it's still been moweded. Another thing that they did when they started to cut there right away for the water line, next morning, day or two, we had about four inches of rain. Well, the ditch in front of my house that I've always, oh, weeded, kept it mowed. County hasn't been in there in over ten years. But, uh, that was about three to, three and a half, four feet piles of the rock, sand, dirt, in the ditch in front of my house. Well, they came in there to clean it up. They didn't clean it up, but then after about ten years ago, I had put sixteen by sixteen walking, uh, blocks. So I could walk the bottom of the ditch and weed both sides. So they messed up all of that, and the ditch now holds water. When the pond stops draining, the overflow, pond, the ditch has got water in it continuously, of mosquitoes and whoever. And they have abused my property and de-vagged it, what they've already done. So I don't care if they never get a chance to do anything, they're not. But when they cut that down, they threw grass and a little straw there, it's back down in the ditch. And the road is a mess. To get into about a third of my lot, I have to go, it's grade level. But if they start to do any work there, it's cut out now until the bus hardly has a chance to turn around without, in that hole. So the road's already messed up because of what their abuse of the property. So I can't depend on them to do anything right. And my lot is the one that's being devalued from all of this. The ditch is washed out, and all the dirt's still in there that they didn't grade right. And the, my blocks that they had in, they piled them on top of the others, so.
Mr. Butler, can you take us to name and address and ask somebody to look at it, Mr. Joe, that'd be all right with you?
Well, some of the men over there working, who, who do well what it is.
But I'm the one in charge, and my name is on the sign.
Well, you get over there and take a look at what damage they've already done to my place.
I don't know. Where do you live?
179 Art.
Where is it?
It's the last house on the left.
I haven't gone no further than here.
Well, you ought to get on Misty Woods Drive then and go to the end there.
I will. I will drive, I will drive down Misty Woods Drive.
Last house on the left.
Take a look.
And another thing, all this, if they throw a lot of water through there, more, the thirty-six inch covert that goes under Misty Woods Drive is already, and if I showed it to some of the county people, the bottom of it is rusted out. It was galvanized, car gait.
But it's, when they come to check on all your things you discussed, Mr. Joel, he's the man that's in charge, and he'll, he'll come and talk to you. And anything you have a problem, we will look, he'll look at.
Well, the man across the road from me, it washed through his yard, same time they were washing it.
That's what I'm telling you. When they come, they'll look at all these problems you're talking about, and thank you for coming.
Well, tell them to come out now that.
That's, that's him standing right there. Okay, thank you both. All right, thank you, sir. Be quiet, have a quiet, please. We'll start back again. The next item on the agenda, we got to vote it. Yes, sir?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion.
Somebody here?
Well, it's only, we're going to allow about three people to talk because it gets repetitive, but then put your name in.
So I moved on to, my name's Jason Fletcher. My wife and my daughter and myself moved to Misty Woods five weeks ago, and, uh, from Florida. And so this was all news to us because we fell in love with the property there and the nice quiet road and all those types of things. So it's very good hearing that there is not going to be, uh, an attachment to this other subdivision, you know, that doesn't necessarily look like kind of the lots that are on Misty Woods right now. That's very, very good. But this on the bottom of it says approved plan. And and from what the gentleman just presented, it said there was supposed to be a cul-de-sac on there. So is the approved plan, my question is, is the approved plan going to be changed, so that there's a cul-de-sac on the development side, where evidently there was some type of, uh, arrangement for there to be a cul-de-sac there?
So the approved plan is to illustrate these lot layouts. That was why we have that on there. I guess I probably should have not said approved, but more of previous concept plan perhaps. Uh, but again, that condition's going to override any kind of plan that's within the, these documents. And that's, that's why this is on here. This is to illustrate those, how that thing was originally set up and what we're changing.
I think to clarify too, these are not considered the construction plans that have been approved through the county. So this is more of a graphical representation of more or less what those construction plans will, are in fact already approved as. So this is not the actual, you know, out in the field, this is how they're going to construct that subdivision. I just want to kind of clarify that.
Okay. Well, we appreciate you all working with us, trying to make sure that we do not have all the added traffic in our quiet little neighborhood.
Thank you, sir. We like, we can have one more to do with this issue. Whoever would like to come up?
Thank you. Yeah.
Anybody coming forward? Okay, then. Yeah, now, we need a motion to accept or deny this issue.
Chairman, I make a motion to approve with conditions file RG 230401, major PRD revision for Misty Woods located at 5,001 High Meadows Drive.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by raising your right hands, and there's none opposed. Next item on the agenda, Mr. Butler.
An insurance request for rezoning at 2278 Worthing Lane from RA to S1 Special, resisting uses and expansion of the current uses. This is the location of the property again off of Worthing Lane, uh, which is essentially a driveway slash easement at that point. This is the current zone of the property, again, everything around it is zone RA. And the aerial view of the site, and you can see the existing structures out there already. Excuse me, and the existing site. And the plat of the property. So the site has a bit of an interesting history. Around 2001, uh, they moved out there and established the radio station on the site. They did receive permits to do that. Then around 2004, 2005, they had applied for a permit to build a, a building out there, and also were subsequently had to rezone the, requested to, requested to rezone the property. That was, that was withdrawn without prejudice before it got to the Board of Commissioners. Uh, so this property has been in use for multiple businesses, uh, for nearly twenty years at this point. Um, again, we saw before, the existing businesses are the existing buildings that are already out there that do propose, to do in addition on the property. You can see it right next to the existing ones, about eleven hundred square feet, include about five offices and a conference room. Currently, they have about eight people that work out there, um, and they plan to increase that. Originally, the request is fifteen. Uh, there is a condition to limit that down to ten, uh, people. And then also, one of the things with the request, they have, they listed out names of businesses. Um, we typically don't want to do that because if a business name changes, then we have to go back into revision to adjust the narrative. So the simpler thing to do is to say, okay, here's what uses are allowed out here and move forward. Uh, one, this is basically office uses with some, some are actually removed from our code. Again, the whole idea is not have things that are beyond what could be necess, what could be within a, a home. It is not intended to have anything that's, it would be detrimental to the area. Again, in terms of development itself, they do have natural growth buffers around it. Um, they plan to literally add the building they propose, and that is it at this point. So in terms of future land use, this is a rural neighborhood. Um, that is intended to be what you see out there, what you see with Grimald Place. You know, basically, large, larger acre development is not, you know, in terms of rural, it's not that, that far as being, you know, large acreage. More one acre plus lot sizes, primarily residential. Um, this does not anticipate having something like this out there. Uh, part of why, and part of why we're okay with it being in place is it's been there. Um, it's a bit unique in that regard. If this is someone coming in saying, hey, I want to establish all these things, we would probably say, well, we can do a provisional home occupation, uh, for some of these. We're not going to be able to do the scale of rezoning, probably not go, uh, favorably, uh, for, for an applicant in that, in that situation. Uh, we do have several conditions. Again, I already kind of hit on some of those. Total employees on the property shall not exceed ten, and also uses on the site should be limited to the following: business services, professional services, financial services, including lenders, radio and recording studio. Again, that is taken from county code. It says for offices and reduced to have uses that are maybe not really intended to be out there. That includes staff recommendation.
Way well handled, ladies and gentlemen. If you would, Mr. Baronaski, are you here? You come to the microphone first, please. After Mr. Baronaski tells us what he wants us to know about, uh, Mr. Cheek, I'll call on you and your three people as you send them in the names up. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Baronaski.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Mark Baronowski, 2278 Worthing Lane. I didn't know Mr. Butler was going to do all that, so I'm going to scan through so I don't repeat a lot of what he said. But I did, to start with, uh, there was some misconceptions that were brought to my attention just about this whole process to start with. And if I could, if I may, uh, just kind of state three or four things to just clarify on our end, such as, uh, I was made aware that there was a newspaper article written. I had no idea about it. We did not contact the newspaper to write anything. Uh, still hadn't even seen it. Don't even know what that was about. We didn't contact the TV station. We didn't touch the P and Z sign. I actually thought it was illegal to touch a P and Z sign and move it, but be that as it may. Uh, we didn't touch that, and we actually operate a nonprofit, uh, radio station out here. And as was stated, have done that for a little over twenty years. And, uh, it is a nonprofit organization that we run as a family that receives no money whatsoever from this. Therefore, the reason for the other businesses that we do in-house. We did move out there a little over twenty years ago, and, and to repeat, uh, we did grant, uh, we did ask for permission to build this office, and it was permitted by the county. It was inspected by the county. It was approved by the county. We have not done anything that was not allowed by the county as we've been out here. We did try in 2005 to expand, and Columbia County denied this, uh, probably for the main reason that there were large motor freight trucks coming in. Since that time, about ten years ago, we actually built a warehouse in Columbia, I mean, in, uh, McDuffie County, the First Thompson exit. And no motor freight trucks come to our business office there on Grimald Place within the last eight to ten years. That op, that warehouse accepts all those motor freight deliveries. And to clarify, we actually, actually only have three non-family members who drive to our office from off-site Monday to Friday. And, uh, so there's only three. Uh, and I was told to give a plan out for ten to fifteen years by the county. Therefore, that's why I don't know what tomorrow's going to bring, so I just picked a number, ten. Who knows, uh, what's going to happen in ten, fifteen, twenty years? So I picked that number, and that's where that came from. We have no current plan to try and ramp up to ten employees. What else was in here? We have, you, you know, we have no intentions of changing the character of this land that we're out on. We, we have approximately a hundred and eight acres, and, uh, there's three of us that actually live on it. And, uh, we have no plans to change any of those buffers. As a matter of fact, over the last twenty years, we have probably planted four to five thousand trees on this hundred acres to keep it in that, uh, you know, rural setting that, uh, that is out there existing now. And, you know, lastly, I would like to state that we're really agreeing with the county in their desire to have this property rezoned to an S1. Despite the fact that it really, uh, S1, as you know, I'm just stating this for the public, is a more narrow definition of what we would actually be allowed to do in an RA. And if I'm incorrect about that, please feel, feel free to, uh, correct me, but, but. But we're willing to do that because the county would like to see it and we want to cooperate with the county and not do anything that the county would not want us to do out there. So that's why we're here saying, yes, we agree with that. We would like to do what the county wants us to do. And other than that, I'm just here to answer any questions.
The new building you're
Yes, sir.
Build, how many cars a day do you think are, is that going to bring you onto your property? Because there seems to be a concern that there's going to be a lot of traffic because of the new building.
Right. We are not open to the public. So there is not a storefront. There is not a need for the last 20 years for anybody from the public to come and see us for any type of business. This is a real estate management that I do personally. So there's no quote unquote storefront that people are driving up there. Matter of fact, we have private property, no trespassing signs at the front to keep people from coming in there.
So you don't have any immediate plans to increase your staffing? That you just put that in there to plan for the future is what you're telling?
That is correct.
You're hiring right now?
No, sir, I'm not. I did, no, we're not. The building is there. We're looking to put that building there for the future. We don't know what's going to happen. But we also, the building that we have now is full, even with just the three off-site. But then we also have me, my dad, my brother, and my son that's out there. So those offices are full. And if and when that happens, we would like to have that additional space.
Other questions? Thank you, Mr. Baronowski.
Thank you all.
Appreciate your comment. Okay, Mr. Cheek.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Ahmad Cheek. I live at 755 Jones Creek Drive. I'm actually here to represent Grimald Place in the opposition to this. Commissioners, I do want to talk about kind of the narrative first and then I really want to focus on the staff recommendation. I do think that the neighbors who actually live at Grimald Place will talk about how it affects them. But I want to kind of focus a little bit more on the technical aspects that I believe in. To kind of start this off, you know, I want to talk about the narrative that's already been established talking about this, that, you know, this has been an existing use of the property for quite some time, for 20 years now. And that now they're just trying to be in compliance. Well, the flip side of that is that they have been in violation for 20 years. And that now they're trying to get it in compliance with code. And not only are they trying to get it in compliance with code, they're actually trying to expand the use of the property. And that's what's talking about in this S1. And I, and he's correct that, and normally speaking, when you're talking about an S1, it is for a specific use of the property. But in this case, we believe that it is not a specific use of the property, but it is actually combining two different uses of the property. Staff recommendation talks about in their narrative that generally speaking, a radio news network goes into a C category of commercial use. That Mr. Baronowski, the applicant, talked about how that's what he's, one of the things he's using. In his application, he also talks about how he's using this property for investment purposes and everything else. Generally speaking, that would be in P1. And we agree that a P1 would allow them, or a P category of zoning would allow them to use all sorts of different properties. But there is no question that this is an expansive use of the property. And it's 21 different types of businesses that that has been included in the staff recommendation that expands that use of the property. We don't believe that that's necessary specifically to this property and it adversely affects, we believe, the neighborhood in general. Because we want to talk about this in two different ways. One is, there is one access point to this neighborhood. And it goes from Columbia Road and it hits essentially a four-way stop and then it goes on to a private road. Now, the applicant does have a road specific to them on their property because, while the property that's in question, if you don't mind going back, maybe, they were, perfect, that's perfect. So if you look at it, the Wertham Lane, the RA that's right there, the applicant actually has approximately 54 acres abutting that property. That also touches Lewisville Road. While they have an access road from there, the narrative that's established in this application mostly talks about using the Wertham Lane Road. And that's a concern to the neighbors. Going to the, you know, the factors that the staff recommendation talks about, you know, specifically, you know, number one talks about, you know, whether the zoning proposal will be, will permit use that is sustainable in view of the use and development of the property. The staff actually talks about it themselves, that everything around here is RA. And the whole point of your jobs is to, especially in Columbia County, is to oversee the progress that's happening in Columbia County and to make sure that the progress is in the right places at the right times. This is essentially a landlocked RA that is attempting to split into an S1. That is not what that property or any surrounding property in that area has essentially been stipulated to during this conversation, excuse me. The second factor goes into the whether the zoning proposal would adversely affect the existing use or usability of the properties. And then there's been this conversation that the neighbors have not disagreed or talked about how they don't like this property. And that's just false. Back in 2005, when this same issue came up, they had a problem with it. When there was traffic concerns, they communicated that. And that's why they're here today. That's why 30 residents, 30 families are behind me because they oppose this, because it adversely affects this area.
Excuse me?
Yes.
I'd like to point out something.
Yes.
In the last 22 years, you know how many complaints have been against this business? To the county? Excuse me, we're talking at the microphone, that's the way it's going to be.
Commissioners, there has been complaints of this property and there has been complaints to the individual who owns that property. And every time, if I may, every time it's come up for a zoning application for anything like that, it has been opposed.
Well, it hasn't come up in 18 years or however long it's been. I'm just pointing out that if it's a terrible place to be back there, why haven't we had more complaints about doing 22 years?
There's two parts to it, Commissioner. One part is that this is an expanded use of the property. So while they've already had a problem with it, the expanded use of the property 10, 15 down, years down the road, that's what this neighborhood is concerned about.
They're letting me ask them a question.
Your Honor, Commissioner, it does. Because what it talks about, I'm usually in court, so I say, your honors, I apologize. But the Commissioner, Commissioner, it does answer the question. Because when there has been any type of change to that property, they have complained. We know that the individuals in this property have complained to the traffic division about the traffic that's being used on this property. We also know that this is an expanded use. So the concern is not now, the concern is tomorrow. And so I do believe that that answers that question.
May I?
Absolutely.
So a couple of things. One is, I think, Mr. Baronowski, I guess we requested, the county requested, a 10 to 15-year
Excuse me.
Could be used for, right? And I think that's one of the things that I'm hearing the residents are concerned about was, or you were concerned about was the list of potential possible
Correct.
Then next 10 to 15 years. There's also a question about the traffic from when, I guess, 18 years ago, when the first zoning failed.
Excuse me.
And I think at that point, he was actually getting commercial traffic up Motham Lane, if I'm understanding correctly. All right? As far as traffic, I checked with the Sheriff's Office, zero complaints in the last year. There's been one complaint in Grimald. It was a noise complaint. But zero traffic complaints.
I would push back, Commissioner, because most of the individuals that I've talked to that live in Grimald Place have been there for much longer than one year, have been there for much longer than two years. But, so you have to look at the age of this property. You have to look at the 20 years that he's been on this property and how many complaints have been there since that has happened. The human part of this is if you complain enough and you're told nothing can be done, you stop complaining. So the pushback is you can't just look at a year. You can't look at two years. You can't even look at five years for this.
Just from traffic, you know.
Agreed, but that's the point. The point is that they've done that. And they didn't do it last year. They didn't do it two years ago. They've been doing it for 20 years. And they just haven't been heard. And so more than happy to answer any other Commissioner questions as well.
Yeah, Mr. Cheek, what would we propose to be the solution in this place? I mean, he's been there doing this. Are we, what are we proposing as a solution? Because if we don't rezone it, the radio station is going to operate tomorrow. I mean, what would be a suitable solution? Because I think we found, it looks to me, a reasonable solution. S1 puts tight boundaries. This one, like you say, is a little loose because he aired on the side of, you know, caution to put as much as he could think could possibly happen, which might have been, you know, not a way to approach an S1 suited to fit your immediate need and then come back and change it. So there may be some fumble, but, you know, we've got a thought, a fairly reasonable solution. We're not going to tell this man, you need to tear your radio station down and move to Thompson. You know, we're not asking the neighbors to endure any more cars from what he said. You know, just the family that works there now is going to be there and the three that come in. He put 10 for the future, which that may have been a judgment error, but that's neither here nor there. So I'm just curious, in light of, if for us to disapprove the S1, what would you, solution would y'all propose for us in lieu of?
Commissioner, I think you've actually answered your question just a little bit in your question. The concern is with the application itself and how it's been proposed. As you've stated, and as a lot of people have stated, that there is 21 different businesses that have been said that they can allow. It needs to be more specific about what is actually going to be used. You are correct that when, if he wants to expand it for another business, then he needs to come to this commission to do that. The second part to this, Commissioner, is that if you are in favor of approving this, while we believe that this specific S1 application does need to be denied for the same reasons you've just talked about, we would ask that the primary use for the commercial, any commercial use of the property should be from the road that's already built between their property and Lewisville Road and not from Wertham Lane and Columbia Road.
County road.
County road.
County road.
Absolutely.
Hate to say it, I'm not trying to be disrespectful to this group, but it's a county road.
Absolutely, but let's make the distinction, let's make the distinction
We're not going to have any comments now while we're talking here.
Let's make the distinction between a feeder road and a main road. Let's make the distinction between Columbia Road and Wertham Lane. Wertham Lane, specific in this situation, was only to be used as a RA use of that property, not as Columbia Road, which has the, which was thought to be used for the commercial purposes of it. Lewisville Road is similar to Columbia Road, that it is meant to be used for commercial property rather than Wertham Lane that is only meant to be used for residential purposes.
All right, I'm going to go there.
Let's go there.
We have a lot, we have a lot of businesses up in there and we're in
Absolutely.
Grimald. You have a transportation company in Grimald. Actually, you have quite a bit, you have a, some of them are bakeries, I think there was a bakery on there. A realtor company, actually a few. I'm not going to name them, but there's an IT partner in there. Handyman Services. They're all commercial companies.
Agreed, but let me make the distinction.
In an RA environment.
Let me make the distinction between what you've just named. Let's talk about the transportation company. First of all, just because someone else is violating the code does not mean that you allow for someone else to accept that code. The second part to that is you named IT. The principal place, first of all, most of these businesses, as I've been told, is their registered address may be their home, but their principal place of business is somewhere else. This is a distinction between that, that their principal place of business is the home right there. Before you push back on me, the second part to that is that you named Realtor, IT, and something else. Two of those
Bakery.
Bakery. But I'd almost guarantee that the bakery has a principal place of business somewhere else.
It could be, yeah, I'm just saying
Okay, so
Not if it's a Home Hawk. Is it a Home Hawk?
No, I don't know if any of these are Home Hocks.
This
I can tell you that of these, of these, there's five that actually have a, and I'm not, I'm not, listen, I don't want to say I'm disparaging or, I'm not comparing. I'm saying that you're going to, it's
But let's compare. Let's compare an IT to a radio station and 21 other different businesses. IT only requires you to be at home. I mean, we're in COVID now, where many homes are work from homes.
An IT guy.
Yes.
Wait a minute. So, Mr. Baronowski, can you, can you come up? So could you narrow the scope, right, while we're here, of what you want that property to be? Stick with that, that
I would be willing to sit down with Mr. Butler and do that. I'm not going to sit here and label them out now, but I agree with Mr. Van Meter. There are other businesses in there. We can sit here and talk all night about whether they operate out of their house, which actually they do, according to the Georgia Secretary of State. That is a retail bakery shop in Grimald Place. Okay? There is a transport Do we want to go by the rules or we want to let everybody talk?
Would you please? We're not going to have outbursts from the audience now. We'll just shut old shooting mats down and won't accomplish anything. We're going to get it done right here at this microphone or it's not going to get done at all. Nobody will get to speak. So it's real reasonable to do that. Go ahead.
The reason I know that is because my wife has actually bought some macarons from them before, but they were good. But anyway, there is also a transportation company that uses Wertham Lane with a large diesel truck, larger than anything we have. But my whole point is, you did not hear me speak about any of this in my presentation because honestly, I don't care. Okay? RA allows you to do that. RA allows you to do a lot of things. And so all we're doing is trying to come, do what the county wants us to do. And we can sit here and dicker about all this. There are a lot of businesses that operate in RA zones throughout the county, as you well know. So that's it. Now, does Will want me to come in and redefine some of that? We'd be glad to, but there's still going to be family businesses that are only there without retail capabilities, bringing the public on to our property.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
One, one other thing that's being neglected. If we hadn't gone to them and requested that they get, help the county get this zoning problem solved, we wouldn't be here tonight because he wouldn't have ever come. They would, and whether we vote up or down tonight, that business will go over tomorrow and nothing's going to change. You won't see any more traffic, you won't see any less traffic. That's what's
Well, I disagree
Out of proportion with this whole thing.
Well, I disagree with that, the tomorrow part of how much, how an expanded use of the property and all of that. What I will say, Commissioner, is just because he's been violating the code and you found out he violated the code and now you want him in compliance of the code, does not mean that he's not in violation of the code. It's an interesting argument to make that he wouldn't be here had we not pointed out that he's violating the code.
But the interesting part of the argument is that we're the ones, not us, because we weren't here then, but the county, speaking of the county itself, we were the ones that made the errors back, years back when all this problem came about. So all we were trying to do is correct the problem.
Agreed, Commissioner, but what you've done is not only attempt to correct the problem, but allow for an expanded use for over 21 different businesses. And while it is 21 different businesses out of the, it's A, B, C, D. They've listed out 21 different types of businesses that can be used in that.
But if I may
Yes.
For a second. But I think the issue with the 21 has been identified. And that is, we asked them to, because S1 is so specific, right? And you were restricted to what that S1 says. And if we ask somebody to list businesses for 10, 15 years that potentially could be used, well, I'd list a bunch more of those too. Because if I got to come back every time, it costs money, right? It costs the neighborhood to bring you in here, right?
It does.
It costs money to bring somebody in here to fight the battle. Right?
Correct.
So
They would have to come back or to ask for a business license, all that would have to be done on each one of those.
What the change is, is for the expanded use of the property, once again, it's about the[1741.28]
I understand.
It, I disagree with the sentiment. Let me put it this way. For 21, 20 years, he's been in violation of the code. I think we can all agree that he's been violating the code. The county has pointed out that he's in violation of the code and he's here to correct that violation. The question is, is it going to take another 20 years to comply with the code that you put in place right now? Because while you only have a restriction of 10 employees, how are you to comply with the fact that if any customer comes in, the concern is customers coming in, what about vendors that come in for this place? What about all of that? There are no conditions at this point for that. And so because this is such a.
But if we do nothing, it's the same problem.
No, no, Commissioner, because once again, he is in RA use, which it will be a violation. The extreme measure is to make him tear down everything. Agreed.
And that legally can't be done and I'd beg you to try.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that part.
I said, I don't believe it can legally be done to run people out of the business after 20 years.
I don't know if I would go that far, but what I would say is, once again, if he wants to run one of the businesses, which the main business that he's been running has been a radio news network, what you've allowed him to say is that he can, for the next 10 years, he never has to come back and he can run an interior decorator shop, he can run a law office shop, he can run whatever he wants to run. Fundamentally, an interior, just for example, because that's one of the uses that are put on there, an interior decorator uses significantly different, has a significantly different traffic pattern than a law office. I'm a little heavy, but I don't need an 18 wheeler to get anywhere to get me to my office or anything like that. An interior decorator would require at least nine truck, nine wheel trucks to get the material there or to deliver material from there. So an expanded use of the property, once again, is what the concern is. If he's going to use the business, let the business that he's using right now, he has expanded it to much more than right now.
County asked him to do that.
The, that's why we're here, because we disagree that the county should allow such an expanded use.
So can I interject? Because I'm the one that wrote the staff report and also proposed these different uses. So the reason why I said, hey, let's talk about the uses, is we have this list of, here's these businesses, these names of businesses. Whole thing was, well, that's great, but again, we don't want to have the same situation with Jones Creek where we're coming back saying, okay, this business name has changed, now we got to do this. Okay, it's changed now. So it's okay, let's define uses that you can put in there. Okay, what are we okay with? Office uses. Okay, that includes, we can't say office uses. That includes quite a few, there's something I got to take out of this. So I said, okay, well, let's look at what's in there. Business services makes sense, let's take one or two out. Financial services makes sense, let's take one or two out. Family services, probably a little too broad, radio recording studio. Yeah, he's already got that. The whole idea was to say, if he changes something in 10 years, he has the ability, let's say one of his kids wants to get into graphic design business, we can go and say, okay, that'll work, it's actually on here. That was the intent of that.
I, the problem is, is the intent does not translate to the application.
And I would, yeah, I can definitely see where you're coming from on that. In terms of who prompted this, the prompting was basically, the request was, I want to expand this site. It is a non-reforming site. We, as a county, cannot give you a building permit. So it is not us saying, hey, we want you to do this. It is, you can't do this until this is done. It's not, we did not seek this out and say, hey, let's fix an issue. It was, there's something you want, here's where we need to get it.
I see your point.
And to kind of dovetail on that, he came here to expand the business. And now, when he expands the business again for an interior decorator shop, he doesn't have to come back to this board to do so. And that's the point. Each of these businesses require or have different traffic patterns. And if you want him to have those businesses, while the neighborhood disagrees with that, then the primary commercial use should be the private property, not a feeder road for a neighborhood.
All right. So, the challenge that I have, there's, you know, you got to take into consideration everybody. Try, you really try.
Absolutely.
Everybody up here, I don't think goes half-cocked and makes decisions. And I know I don't, I do, I do a lot. And there's a lot of case law that specifically addresses a lot of this, these issues.
Correct.
And they, you know, for me, it all boils down to somebody trying to tell me what I can do with my property.
Okay.
It would be, look, I wouldn't go into Grumaud Place and tell anybody in here what they can do with their property anymore than I tell Mr. Baronowski what he can do with his.
Okay.
Or Mr. Allen. That's kind of where my dilemma, or for me, my dilemma becomes, so I do, I spend hours looking, you know, see what's the best solution for everybody. The S one is the best solution for everybody. And what happens is, what happens is, I've said this before, we have FUD, we have fear and uncertainty and doubt because we don't know. And that invokes an emotional response, right? And all anybody in here is trying to do is do what's right, right? And so I know there's a lot of emotional, a lot of outcry, and I just ask everybody to kind of be patient and listen, there's, it's, this is a, you know, this is the second time Mr. Baronowski's been in here. I think the first time I was withdrawn with prejudice or without prejudice? Without prejudice? Probably, and I wasn't here then, so I'm assuming he was having heavy equipment brought in there. So in my mind, in my eyes, he's already given some. Follow me, because he took that out because there was heavy equipment going down Wertham Lane. But as a condition to this S one, he cannot have more than 10 people working there, no matter what. It doesn't matter how much stuff he puts back there.
Look, let me push back on two different things. I know I've been pushing back a lot.
But we got a lot more to do.
Absolutely, I'm just going to try to counter as fast as I can for this. Okay, so two of the parts that you're talking about right here. One part is that you're talking about the fear and uncertainty and doubt. I agree that there is fear and uncertainty doubt on both sides, but the side should be, you then look into the factors of what's around there and what's already happened. Once again, the fear and uncertainty to doubt of what's happened is in 2005, I think it was his father, that, the applicant's father, that was the one that made the application at that time, but I don't know. But, but it has been in violation because, since then. And so the fear and uncertainty to doubt goes to the applicant's history rather than the neighborhood. So it's already been in violation. You talk about the 10 employees, but once again, there's only been a verbal confirmation that there will be no customers going through there. There's only been a verbal confirmation that there's no vendors through there. And when you expand the use, it's hard to imagine that out of 21 businesses that can be operated there, there's not going to be one customer that goes through there.
This takes it away from verbal to, to this is an agreement.
Only to the effect of the 10 employees, that it is not a condition that this is not the principal place of business. I use that phrase, it's the legal phrase of it all, but it's not the principal place of business in which the customers can come in. That is not a condition that's already present in this. And we've already talked about how broad it is. The second part of this, Commissioner, and I'll be done after that, is you talk about, you don't want to tell an owner of a property what to do with that property. Zoning does that. When you buy a property, the zoning is already established for it. And if you want to buy the property and rezone it for the purposes, for what you want to do it for, then you put it into the contract. It happens all of the time.
It does, and so does, zoning is not a static event, it is a dynamic event. It happens all the time.
Absolutely.
That's why we're here.
Absolutely.
And we're losing sight of the fact too, the zoning violation was not on them, the zoning violation was on the county doing what they did.
Okay.
Now, anyway.
Once again, it's.
That's what happened.
It's an interesting argument though, Commissioner, to say it's on the county that they've been violating the code for 20 years. We want to correct that mistake and expand.
That's right, that's right.
You're asking, you're trying to get your cake and eat it too at that point. And so, Ms. Garaway, I know you.
I just think we're talking in circles.
We are, let's let's these other three folks talk.
Understood, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mark. And these, and when we have people coming to the microphone, that was a little different because he's representing all of you, but we normally hold it to three to five minutes.
My name is Mark Coney. I live at 6054 Foster Way in Grumaud Place. Well, as has been discussed here, we're here because we're all pretty much opposed to Mr. Baronowski trying to get his RA converted to an S one. And of course, we know by discussion here that it was approved by the county 20-plus years ago. And he, and we went through this 18 years ago to try to keep him from going to an S one. We feel like now, of course, that it's being kind of forced upon us to have this S one within our neighborhood, which we should not have to put up with. We feel like, yes, he said, we're going to be limited to 10 people, you know, on this property, but how can you keep that from not multiplying? You or I or anybody else don't keep count of how many people are employed there or what's going on there. The traffic, that is a big concern because as was noted, one way in, one way out of our subdivision, all the traffic is coming through our subdivision. There's been numerous accounts when, I can tell you, if you don't watch it real close, you'd be getting hurt. Traffic comes through there and we've had patrol cars sitting in there before, monitoring the traffic, but some of those cars come off of that private road 35 to 40 miles an hour, and I can guarantee you that is what they're doing off of that private gravel road and coming into our, into the main drag that goes out to Columbia Road. We can't tolerate that with children in there, grandchildren in there, and we're walking all the time. We don't have sidewalks in there to walk on. We have to walk on the road or alongside of the road. So we, we have to be extra cautious just because of that and that shouldn't be. We bought in there and we tried to maintain a nice serene place. We wanted a place to raise our children and have privacy and be comfortable with our neighbors and everybody. But, you know, when you start adding a business in there of this magnitude, and I don't say just somebody's working out at their home, that's not the point here, you know, being a real estate agent working out of your home or something like that. Point is, it's more than that. It adds traffic. And when you zone it S one, then that leaves it open for even more to happen down the road. And he's, now, it was said also, he's got 100-plus acres out there. Well, several of those acres are right across the road from me and it joins to this property that he is wanting to rezone S one. What says in a few years down the road, he doesn't want that to be part of his S one up there. Yeah, he has to come through you and then we have to go through this whole mess again. And if that becomes an S one, that makes a big factor on the value of our properties in there, whether that piece of property or just the one that he has back there becomes an S one. It's going to affect the value of our property. If you're a person wanting a nice place, it's going to cost you a half million dollars or more. Are you wanting to spend that kind of money for a residence where you know there's business already established in there and S one, which can be multiple different businesses? And with the prospect of more being able to be put in there, because once an S one is in your property, around your property, what says S one can't happen again in your subdivision or right close by you? And this is not the intention of what this was designed for. It was RA, that was what it was designed for, that's what, and I don't know how it ever got approved, you know, to have the situation come up that it has come up now. But it was really, I know it's not on you guys because you guys weren't here at the time and I understand that, but you know, and you're trying to rectify a problem, but that's, that's not the point. The point is, we don't want this type of situation to be there. We don't want any extra traffic to hinder what we thought was a peaceful neighborhood, you know? And, and that's.
Let me, I'm not trying to interrupt, but I need to say something here. Assume this family needs their property to their grandchildren. We don't ever know what our grandchildren, any other generation's going to do, but you realize under RA, they could today take that property and subdivide it and sell it for residential and put a bunch of houses back there and use Grumaud Place to go right through. That's a heck of a lot worse than this S one. I'm just using that for an example.
Well, to start with that, that might be a true statement, but we don't know what the future is going to bring us, what tomorrow's going to bring us. And so if you put an S one in there, you could still have that same situation, just what you're talking about, whether you subdivide, and I don't.
S one can't be subdivided.
Right, but it can have multiple businesses. And that's the point, and S one.
They have to be.
And S one can be expanded, you know, like I say, there's 100 more acres there that's still attached here.
All right, so thank you for coming.
Okay.
Mr. Darrell Stewart.
Committee members, my name is Darrell Stewart. I live at 6065 Foster Way. I see we don't have much time, but I'm not, so I'm going to just cut to the chase. This man right here, James Van Meter, said, we try to treat everybody fair in here. Well, this group back here, 30 residents signed, every one of them that lives there signed protesting this thing. I think you can see they all showed up. I read the planning and zoning duties of y'all and I can't find anywhere in there where it says y'all's chairman, Al Dempsey's got the right to solicit. Tony Hogan wants with Mr. Baronowski over there at the same time.
That's not true.
And, and me twice, that's me twice, let me finish.
And you asked me to come to your house.
Did I just?
You asked me to come by your.
I ain't come, you never know that. Hey, you come to my, at Circle K and wanted to speak to me in private because you didn't want the rest of them here.
Let's get back to the point.
I'm telling you, the first response he said, when he got there at Circle K, he says, I know you don't like Baronowski, but this thing should have been rezoned 30 years ago. I corrected him right then. I said, Baronowski hadn't been living here 30 years ago. I said, he moved here two years after I did in 90, I moved in 99, he moved in 2001. All right, and I just don't think it's fair, we up against the wall when he can solicit on behalf of Baronowski against us. We ain't got a chance.
Could I make a point? Let me, I got something I got to say. I got something I got to say.
I got witnesses both times.
Would you hold up just one minute, please? Tony and Connie Hogan have been friends of mine for 30, 35 years and my children, their children grew up together.
Listen to me.
Let me finish and don't, please don't come from the back. Now, I went to see Tony because I knew he had been sick. And let me finish. And Mr. Baronowski went by himself, I didn't take him there, to clarify the record. But that has nothing to do with nothing, part of this.
Got a lot to do with it.
Go ahead and finish up with your three to five minutes.
On his behalf against us, we don't have a chance like that.
Just go ahead and finish.
All right, that's the, that's the first problem right there. He come to my house after that too. Got a witness there, brother-in-law's working on my freezer. And he said, I want to carry you back there to his property. And I said, I'm going to cut this short, I don't have no desire to go back. I've never stepped foot on the place, never, never don't want to. I'm not obligated him and I'm not obligated that man right there. But I will tell you one thing, when he approaches me and says he wants to go back there and then tells me the traffic ain't going to be no worse than all, he don't live there. He ain't got no idea. The next problem, they put up that rezoning sign, it says for the public hearing, so they can know. Well, they put it up 400 feet past where it's at now, back on behind his mailbox on his private drive, 400 feet from where I rode in. Only person that could see that sign is the Lord Jesus Christ. And lo and behold, I took pictures of it because luckily a concerned citizen called Tony Hogan and he called me. I went down there and took the before and after picture. It got moved at 8:17 that night after I took pictures at 3:00. And you know, that's just too many coincidences. Something stinks and it, and it just ain't right to put us up against the wall when that man can go solicit on behalf of that man. We live in District Four just like that man does. We got, we should have just as many rights.
Either one. Who places the sign?
I do.
You do?
So.
And what's the driveway?
So staff places the signs and it's at the public road and this was incorrectly located initially and it was moved on the day that it was placed. It was placed correctly and legally, so there is no issue with whether or not this is properly noticed and all of that.
Okay, Ms. Wooton.
My name is Carl Wooton and I live at 5997 Hydrocheway in Grumaud Place. Thank you for allowing me to speak and I will try not to belabor the points that have already been made by my neighbors, but to say that I totally respect and support. but to say that I totally respect and support everything that they have said and appreciate their willingness to stand up for our neighborhood. I basically have three points to cover. At the end of the day, we are a neighborhood, not the entranceway to five separate businesses that have been placed on the property contiguous with our neighborhood. We do not oppose the fact that they have businesses. That is not our concern. But we are, we are, and I especially, am sincerely frightened of the potential negative effects, the negative effects to allowing the transportation, the traffic into, to our subdivision. Most of us have children, most of us have grandchildren, just as I'm sure you also do. And stop and think about allowing an S1 in the middle of your subdivision. And basically, you know, most of us live, or I lived in, for many years in Martinetta, in a very contained neighborhood. And I can assure you that the people in Wingate would have pitched a fit. So, you know, we are not being unreasonable. Again, we understand he's got a business to run. All we are basically asking is that you consider that he already has an interest to his properties. Number two, we are a neighborhood with aging adults, with children, with grandchildren and handicapped adults, all living. Our desire is to protect them all. Our single exit, which has been mentioned on and off Columbia Road, leads to three different streets in our neighborhood and those streets have hills and valleys and curves. And sight is a problem. If you are wheeling through that neighborhood at thirty-five or forty miles an hour, which we can document, instead of the twenty-five mile per hour speed limit, then it just scares me to death, you know? But we have no sidewalks, we have not asked for sidewalks. So our children ride bikes up and down the road, they drive a golf cart, they do all the things that normal people in other communities do. We have adults who walk in the neighborhood. Some even come from across Columbia Road and walk in our neighborhood because they need the exercise and this is a place where they can get it. So, you know, our properties have increased in value as well as our property taxes, which we have paid without complaint. When Larry and I bought in Gama Place, it was on a prayer and a whistle. You know, we bought the property, we worked hard and were able to build a home and we have done our estate planning and hope that all goes well at the end of the day. That's neither here nor there, but we respect where we live and throughout the years, I've been able to respect what Columbia County has done for us. But this is just taking a whole new life. And once again, I will just say, we do not want Mr. Baronowski to have to go out of business. That is not our claim. We know that vendors and y'all say they, he says, y'all say that they never come in and out of our property. That is indeed wrong. I won't say it's a lie, but it is wrong. They are coming in and out of the Gama Place property. And I'm going to say this and please excuse me, but I'm speaking as a woman. And I can imagine sitting in Mr. Dempsey's home, or I can imagine sitting in Mr. Baronowski's home and chatting with wives and wives seem to say, "Honey, can you prevent, you know, all these trucks from coming through, all these cars?" You know, I'm scared about our children. Well, we are scared about the same thing and it continues to happen. You can sit up there and say, "You've never seen a truck go through." Well, we all can tell you different. And then finally, and I'm going to shut up soon, I am struggling with the deceitful matter that this seems to have, that this was undertaken. The signing announced the change, as you said, it was placed incorrectly, okay? Well, somebody had to notify y'all that it was placed incorrectly so y'all could run out and change it. So, but we asked, may we have an additional sign to put out at the front of the property? And we were told, no, that was not authorized. And so what do we do as a neighborhood? We go by our own slides so we could place them at Columbia Road and up toward the middle of the property so that everybody, our neighbors, could see what was being planned. And again, that, I struggle with that. You know, Mr. Dempsey stated in this meeting just a few minutes ago that activity creates activity. It does. Mr. Baronowski's activity creates activity in our subdivision, in our home. Please honor the RA designation that has been in practice for the last twenty years. We have been, as you know, through this, and we have been told through reputable sources, this change is being supported not only by this commission, but also the Board of Commissioners. They are requesting, as well as Mr. Dempsey and Mr. Baronowski, this change. And I ask the question to all of you, you know, if this was, were being requested in your neighborhood, if two lots became vacant and somebody said, "Wow, that's, those are large lots. Let me put a, let me get an S1 and maybe down the road, I can flip a little business in there." None of you, not a one of you would allow this to happen.
Ms. Wooton, you've made your point. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Yes, ma'am, if you could come up to the microphone. Sir, I couldn't see.
My name is Mark Walls, I live at twenty-two thirty Wortham Lane. I have a couple of people here. I have one question for Mr. Baronowski. Is with over a hundred acres, why does he feel like he has to access through Wortham Lane? Why can't he go out to?
Well, I could probably answer it. For example, because the office is on that end down by that lane. Right down there by that driveway.
Hundred acres?
That's where the office is.
It's the, the property in question, being fourteen point eight six.
Right. But I'm saying a hundred acres, I could probably find a path up to Lewisville Road.
Well, he's got a lot of that electronic equipment with the radio station.
Talking about a driveway.
Sir?
Talking about a driveway.
Are you talking about them moving their operation?
No, I'm not talking about moving that, no. I'm, I'm asking the question is, why don't they just take the driveway over Lewisville Road through their property? Can he answer it?
Yes, sir, come answer this and then we're going to round it up.
So the question is, why don't we stop using that drive and use the other side? Is that the correction?
Yes, sir.
Correct question. Because we've used this driveway and it's a public road that we're entering out onto and that's what we do.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Wait, you got a question?
Well, hold on, hold on. Mr. Baronowski, I've got a question. Would you, would you be opposed to narrowing? First of all, I'd probably like to ask of Gama Place, first with it. If you, if you could close the scope on that, on your request, I know that.
Of the narrative?
Yes, sir, I know that you didn't do, I understand how that happened, but, but in fairness to them, I'm not sure they believe that it happened the way it happened. And, you know, and I, I'm not, and I'm sitting here trying to think about if I, I'm in their play and I, and I have been, I'll, I'll tell you a little story in a minute, but I think that if you, if we could narrow that down, I think some of them would be like, okay, they're really, I think I'm hearing they're worried about you getting that S1 and then all of a sudden coming up with these ideas of these businesses and stuff. I think that's what, what I'm hearing.
Well, there's no business that would be allowed outside of the current narrative, but if that would help, that's fine. I don't mind sitting down with Mr. Butler, that's how we came up with this one. It's like, well, what are you going to do in twenty years? I don't have a clue.
Is the question, so the question seems to be that the condition with all the lists of the businesses listed out. So if you just remove that condition, you're now back to the four or five that he has listed by name. That'd be the only businesses that can be there.
Would you be okay with that? That we?
I mean, real estate management is a pretty broad definition, sure.
And then you would have to come back.
If I wanted to start.
Right, no, 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 I know, we could do that now, but I'm just saying that, but if you, there was any change to that, then you would have to come back and, and before this committee. I think that would, I, I know that from, from my standpoint, that would make, make it, make it easier.
I didn't think we were allowed to just sit there and name out names of businesses, which is part of the problem.
So it's one that you can, but it's one of those that basically when you apply for a business license, we're going to say, okay, is kitchen or real estate applying for a business license?
I know, I don't think that's what you're asking. I think he's asking for not the name of the business, but.
Specific type of business.
The type of business.
And the business would have to be in that eleven hundred square foot building, right? With your five, all five rooms with.
They're just asking for protection. From what I hear, this, this lady that was, did the best job as far as I'm concerned explaining it, they want protection of, of that. And I think that if we can get that to them, listen, some of them aren't going to be satisfied. No matter, well, unless we run you to Thompson. But, and, and I understand that, I'm not belittling that, I understand. They have a beautiful place there, I'm familiar with it.
And we live in a beautiful place and we're in a beautiful place and a lot of work.
Why can't we make that, that change right now and, and make, make that, and, and do it? And I, and I, you know, and just let that be the case? Because we're not going to satisfy everything and every worry, but I think we could, I think we owe that to them, to do that. I think that's reasonable is what I'm trying to say.
Mr. Butler, go down the list a little bit right quick, if everybody's got the patience to do this and then we'll see if we can eliminate some things to make it seem more satisfactory.
Of the condition, right?
Yeah. Basically changing the condition itself.
Yeah.
So, yeah, business services, including advertising, business management consulting, computer data processing and graphic design.
Are you asking me to swipe off a couple of those? Uh, data processing.
So list what you would want.
What I would?
Yeah, what you want.
You know, nothing we do out there, and I will correct this, this one thing, I do want to state, nothing we do out there draws the public into us, okay? I mean, if we're going, if I'm going to have to keep talking and listening to that. We might as well just not willing to do what I'm out offering to do now if I got to keep listening to that.
The interior decorator seemed to be something that concerned people, that, that could be our big warehouse, you know?
Drag it off. So, so if I go down the list here, advertising, business management consulting, computer data processing, no. Professional services, lawyer, we don't have any lawyers in the family, accountant, I mean, that's, there's plenty of people that do that in your house. Auditor, bookkeeper, engineer, we don't have any engineers, architect, we don't have any architects. Sales office, you can do that in your house, so we'll keep that. Interior decorator, take that off. Financial services, including lender, you can do that in your house, so we'll keep that. Investment or brokerage house, no, we're not that. Real estate or insurance agent, no, but we are a real estate management company for property we own. Mortgage agent, no. And yes, we, we do have a radio recording studio. And I want to emphasize again, we purposely said twenty years ago when we were, were doing all this, we will not have a tower on that property. There is not a tower on that property. We don't own a tower in Columbia County. The tower that we use for the radio here is actually in South Carolina. So I've seen somebody texting me something, somebody put it on Facebook, they got it. We have no towers on that property. So if you want to do what we just said, sure.
I, I think that's very reasonable.
Now, we'll go back and read out what we're talking about later.
Yeah, I, I, you were, you were going pretty fast there.
I'll do it again.
Will wrote them down.
Well, we'll see. Business services, you have, let's see, advertising was included and business management was included, but no computer or data processing or graphic design, is that correct? Business services.
He, he said he can't hear the microphone, but well.
He's listening.
I mean, business services, including advertising and business management consulting are included. Computer data processing, graphic design are not.
Wow.
Okay. Professional services, we are, we're only including.
Accountant.
Accountant, auditor, bookkeeper, sales office.
Sales office.
And then no interior decorator.
Correct.
Financial services, we have lender.
No.
Oh, no lender, excuse me. Uh, real estate management and that was, I believe, it.
Yeah, just real estate management.
Management and then radio.
Eliminated on half of.
Correct.
Good idea.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
I think that's a.
What's that?
Well, I mean, there's plenty of people that sell now in Gama Place out of there, so it's.
I understand, that's, that's, that's.
Give and take.
Been very, very reasonable there and, and I think that we've, we've, we've cut that, we've cut that down to where it's manageable. We're not, we're not going to be able to strike enough off for everybody to raise their hand and say, "Let's do this one." It's, you know.
I think the other.
Sir, can we scratch the sales office, it's not relative?
Sure.
Okay, scratch it. Now.
I think the other one too, to keep in mind, is the other condition that's being proposed is also the limit of ten employees on site. So regardless of how many of these stay or go, there's still only.
The question on how do you track the business licenses? Tell us how many employees you have. That's how it gets tracked.
That's how you.
Now, could he, could someone, could they all of a sudden have twelve and a lot? It happens all the time, but I mean, that's how we track it.
We tend to catch people too through businesses reaplication.
Thank you, Mr. Baronowski.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Well, as long as she.
So, the.
Place your name and address.
My name is John Walters, I live at sixty-twenty Hydrich Way. Can you do the zoomed out one? So everybody is talking about traffic and it just sounds like the same word. There's a stop sign right there and there's one right there. This is a superhighway. They don't slow down, they don't stop. This is a specific, specific issue. That's the problem, this is what everybody's talking about.
I would call the police.
To do what? This is private property.
Hold on.
You can stop, man.
This is private property right here.
Hold on.
They're entering private property, there's signs, it's signed.
You, I'm almost, can I say something real quick?
Yeah.
You're all are making an assumption it's coming from his property because there's two ingress and egress points at the end.
It's coming from his property.
You, you make.
This person, I'm not, I'm, I live there.
The whites live back.
I live there.
I know you live there.
I walk from here, this is our route and we go back. Mr. Dale walks from here.
The whites live back there too, you know?
What's that?
The whites, Stan White, they live back there on that. The whites, Stan White, they live back there on that same road.
Well, and there's even an access road way back here that goes.
There is.
However, the traffic pattern that everybody, I'm gonna take some liberties, that everybody is concerned is this one. It's fast. Can we get a four-way stop?
We don't, that's not.
See, we don't do that.
Okay, but this is a planning.
Call the sheriff's department.
This is a planning issue.
We don't do that.
This is the traffic issue.
We don't do that. We don't have the power to do that. You have to call the sheriff's department and let them do a stop on it and go ahead.
Traffic engineering could take a look at that. I think they have in the past, and it has not warranted, uh, any additional signage. But we certainly can pass that along to them to maybe take another look at that. And again, I don't remember exactly how long ago that was, but I did talk with, uh, folks in traffic engineering and the deputy county manager. Uh, they did indicate that they had previously looked at that intersection. Uh, so we can certainly pass that along. That, that can be done tomorrow.
And my only issue with the zone is that if this goes S1, it'll always be S1. Way after everybody's gone.
An assumption.
Okay, so they're gonna rezone it to what? It's not gonna go down.
It can't.
It's not gonna go back to RA, right?
No, sir.
Okay, so that's it. That's the issue here. It's forever. It's forever.
There's a lot of protection in that S1 for the, for the neighbors too. We hadn't talked about that.
So I just, those are my two things. And I think that she did great.
She did great.
Yeah, she did great.
Like a two-hour meeting, her first one.
Okay. Now. Now. Let's call, I'd like a motion to accept or deny this issue.
Chairman, I make a motion to approve with conditions, file RZ 23-04-02.
Yep.
Rezoning from RA to S1 at 2278 Wertham Lane.
We have a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Are there any opposed?
I've just had a question. Uh, we, the, the, the conditions are gonna be what we just did, right?
So that's a part of the motion.
I need to take that motion.
I, I just didn't.
I was ask, ask.
I don't know if we needed to spell them out.
Pass motion. All right, let's do this again.
All right.
Chairman, I make a motion to approve with conditions as modified or corrected, file RZ 23-04-02. Rezoning from RA to S1 at 2278 Wertham Lane.
We will have a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. There's none opposed. Ladies and gentlemen, we're gonna take a two or three-minute break while the Gromaud Place people can leave. And then we're gonna get to the rest of the business. I don't know who the hell he is.
Terry Greenin.
He gonna get you, bro.
You know, I hired his son when he asked me to, and he's now.
That guy? That guy right there?
He's a successful IT guy, but I guess I don't, he ain't get his way, so he's gonna be.
Glad you did that. That was very good. That was very helpful.
The truth is. I'm gonna send you all this.
What's he talking about them?
Case law?
What does he have to do?
Cross those doors.
They gonna, hopefully they're gonna hold it down to two or three every day. I let them go too long, but I was trying to get to Gromaud Place. I know I did. I know I did. And I was trying to hit it.
You rezoned it.
I gotta tell you. I know him. He's a bookkeeper, right?
Yeah, Terry Greenin.
Terry Greenin. Anyone like to pick up that? Cherry Greenin?
I know you are.
I never got to. I'd always see him with the bookkeepers. Did we just get apprehended, man, at the beginning? Hey, listen, when I was a captain, too, I had to stand in the garbage can because I was rubbish.
There's absolutely.
The reason I went.
There's so much case law.
Time it was. But I tell you what, he would kiss my ass. I was just trying to, I see him right there. Didn't know what a big dick.
That's a good point.
I know she's watching.
Only got to that.
We got everybody? Ladies and gentlemen, we're calling the meeting back to order. Okay, the next item on the agenda, Mr. Butler.
Sheriff's Sheriff, this is a request for plan revision off William Few Parkway, uh, to allow 24-hour operation of a convenience store. On 3.56 acres currently zoned and planning to develop. It shows the location of the property, the intersection William Few and Washington Road. And again, currently zoned and planning to develop as part of Riverwood. And aerial view of the site, also existing site. And the plot of the property showing the property itself. The current site plan is under review. This is for a Parker's Kitchen. Uh, this is a, a convenience store, uh, looking to operate 24 hours a day. So overall, um, pretty straightforward review. Um, 24 hours, our 24-hour operation is, uh, can't do that under our code, under the use provisions for this. Uh, when, when, when Riverwood was rezoned, um, that section was found as having CC uses, so it followed our, follows our code forever. Uh, which does have that use provision within it. Um, from our standpoint, usually we're looking at is, you know, how close our residences to the property. Could it be detrimental with light or noise, that sort of thing? That's usually what we're looking at with this. Uh, no residences are really close by. There's one that's over 500 feet away over on, on Windmill. Uh, the property across the street is a convenience store. Um, it is technically not performing. Been there for a while. It is also 24 hours. Uh, really, our only concern is it's more of one of those, we just wanna be sure that they're not doing anything outside of the ordinary. With their parking, with their lighting design, we have requested a condition. They provide us with a photometric plan. Uh, no requirements on foot handles or anything, because again, the distance of that is, it doesn't make any sense to even look at that. Or just put a requirement on the number there. Again, we recommend approval with a condition that they have to give us a photometric plan, uh, for some location light on the site. Foot, foot handle reads that the property lines beyond any proposed shielding for those lights. I include staff recommendation.
Anyone here that likes to speak far against this issue? Yes, ma'am.
Marlena Bershron, 2545 Willow Creek Court. All right, thank you for, um, the opportunity to speak. I promise I will be less than the 25 minutes of the previous attorney. So my feelings echo a lot of the sentiments we've heard from folks tonight. We bought into this community because we liked it. We like this neck of the woods. We live off of Keokke Ridge. We pay the taxes, and we wanna save it and protect it the way it is. Uh, we deserve nice things. And I don't think that the profits from one party or from one, um, person, those profits don't, don't supersede the community's collective best interests or, um, interests, best interests as well as values. So with all due respect to Will, I think this particular plan, asking for 24 hours when there's already a 24-hour gas station and convenience store on the other side of the corner, cutting down three and a half acres of trees for something we already have, to me, is no added value and only setbacks. So I think this plan is irresponsible, unreasonable, out of touch, and irreverent. Now, in the greater context, this is part of a 70-acre PUD, right? So this is just one cut of, of many future. And right now, the commission has no existing requirements or regulations on preserving vegetation. So it might just seem like three and a half acres, but guess what? You lose that patch of trees across from the existing gas station and from existing development on the south side of Washington. Well, you start to double down on the noise and the light pollution because the trees are gone. And now you have two sets of traffic and business going on when frankly, the nice thing about this neighborhood is that it is quiet. That corner right now is dark after a certain time. And if we wanted action all night long, there were other places farther east on Washington we could have moved to. And I think frankly, if someone needs something, they can keep driving east on Washington if they can't find it at the gas station. I'm worried that I'm gonna drive past that corner, because when we wanna turn to go home, I'm gonna think I'm still in Martiness. And I'm just gonna keep on going. In addition to that, as this corner slowly becomes deformed and devalued, I'm concerned about the other residents that live downhill of that, at a, at a lower elevation. Some math that I think you are all entitled to. So one acre of trees absorbs 800 tons of water. Just wrap your heads around that for a second. That's 1.6 million pounds of water. That's gotta go somewhere else now. You're gonna remove three and a half acres. That's 2,800 tons of water. That's gonna find its way. And I pity the, the person or the residence or business that ends up having that in their backyard if we have six inches of rain in a 24-hour period. All the money in the world can't buy back quiet. It can't buy back darkness. And it can't buy back 50-plus years of established wooded growth and habitat. So those things said, I just hope that you reconsider this 24-hour zoning and at least protect the sanctity of the quiet on that side of the corner. Because there's no reason that we need two 24-hour convenience places within walking distance of our schools and homes. I also think that, you know, that haze and that heat and that pollution that you drive through on Washington, I did it today, it's palpable. And as soon as you get up to this corner, you can kind of let a sigh of relief. It's gone. It clears out. Why? Because of trees. And we're just gonna keep this march up, and we're gonna add to pollution. We're talking air pollution, noise pollution, as well as, uh, as well as light pollution. And my concern too is studies have already shown us that darkness, um, and, and that light exposure for 24 hours increases cortisol levels. It adds to weight gain. We, we didn't choose this part of the town because we wanted to live near a 24-hour convenience. I wanna say that we're not a colony, so it's not okay for some out-of-town business to come in and exploit and destroy our natural resources and undermine what we value in our community. And we don't have time to regrow 50-plus years of trees if this becomes a trend. Now, I've been asking the commissioners, I'm almost done, I'll wrap it up. I've been asking the commissioners politely since 2017 to please revisit the regulations on vegetation requirements for commercial development. They can do the whole thing. That's, whole 70 acres can be gone in my lifetime while I live here. And I just think that's irresponsible. So let's go back. Let's take a, a quick breath so that we don't have a depreciating asset at that corner. And we start putting in buffers beyond the clean water act. They have to leave at least 25 feet, 25 feet. That's it. That's all they need to leave before Uchi Creek. So I think all of us will enjoy that neck of the woods a lot more if we can preserve at least a higher percentage, 30% of what's there already. And I'm not ready to surrender to this trend of just popping up a business, making it something that we already have. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else like to address this issue?
Put back up the, uh, aerial view. I'm Robert Titus with the, um, on behalf of Parker's Development. Couple of the things that were mentioned were lighting issues. Go on that one corner. This is the, this is the piece, this is the quadrant of William Few Parkway, Washington Road that we're talking about. You're not gonna get anything else there but the gas station, in my opinion. Nobody's gonna build a house there beyond that. So she was talking about water quality. Uh, the county has a post-construction stormwater quality requirement that before it enters the creek, we have to treat it. 80% of total census bodies removal. So that's one thing. So it's gonna be thing before it goes in, um, as far as buffers go, lighting and all that. Uh, like you said, a long, long branch there is a 25-foot undisturbed natural buffer that you can't do anything with. So, uh, I'm not sure where she lived. Oh, so you, where do you live? Back towards town?
Keokke Ridge.
Down William Few.
He lives a good way back, up the hill.
I, I give my address, 886 Windmill Lane. Live right in there. So anyway, my point is, there will be water quality issues that they are required to provide on the construction plans before the water discharge. I think we did this one in underground detention. Isolated. Um, there is a buffer along, long branch, as I said, that will prevent lighting issues. Are there any other questions I might can answer?
Y'all got any questions? Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, if you got a comment, the microphone, let's get after it.
I appreciate you sharing that. Um, Mike, one question would be, is it possible to retain some of the existing vegetation rather than re-landscape on your project? So out of the three and a half acres, the whole site will not be cleared. There will be a, a fringe.
So the whole parcel's three and a half acres. They're only developing, so if you, basically in line with Starbucks entrance, give or take, that's as far. Can you go back to the aerial? I think it's, I think it might be a little off. Yeah, so basically where that line is, that's as far as they're going for development. Um, they're not clearing the rest of it.
Okay.
Um, so it's, it's gonna be that corner, yes. But the other thing too is that they have to meet our HCP code, which again, is, is it appropriate for some? Some don't think so, but most of our out-of-town folks have been, have said that's a, we, we gotta plant a lot, um, in Columbia County. Uh, they're gonna have to plant along both frontages. Uh, they're gonna have to meet the overall requirements for interior landscaping. Um, so it's not gonna be just a parking lot. It's not gonna look like what's across the street either. Um, that is subpar. Um, so it'll, it'll be a decent land, or landscape will be decent on it, that's what I will say. Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Um, I think that, from what I saw too, it actually enhances the shopping experiences aesthetically as well as environmentally for you. When you're at Publix and you can see that fringe of trees around that area, or if you're at the other side. So whatever you can do to kind of maintain the shape of the corner where you can, the profile of the canopy in places that you don't have to, does that make sense?
Okay, we, we've got to move forward.
Okay. Well, one last thing though. The lights that you're putting in, is there a height maximum? So that maybe that if they are on for your customers, that they're below the tree line so that other people don't see them and they don't disturb the animals that are over there? I, I speak on behalf of the animals and trees, even though they don't.
We've got to move forward, ma'am.
Okay, but can you answer my question?
Yeah. Talk after.
Okay.
So again, that condition requires them to give us a, a lighting plan that shows where they're gonna put everything, what it's gonna be made up of, how they're gonna, um, or shield it, what have you. Most, most current designs, uh, for commercial properties like this are gonna be LED, and they usually don't leave the site. Or if they do, it's very little. And could, could it be designed improperly? It could. That's why we have that condition. And again, happy to, you know, have you look at, at the plans if you like. Not a problem.
Okay. We have a motion to accept or deny this issue.
Chairman, make a motion to approve with condition, file RZ 23-04-03. Major PUD revision for tax map 065 parcel 934 to allow 24-hour operation of a convenience.
We have a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. All in favor. Okay, the next item, Mr. Douglas.
Uh, yes, sir. The next application is for, uh, 722 through 736 Campana Drive. Uh, there, it's eight parcels in the Bell Tower subdivision. There's owned R2, and they, uh, span roughly 2.3 acres altogether. They're seeking a, uh, uh, variance to the front setback for these lots, uh, all eight of them. Uh, this shows the location, again, in the Bell Tower subdivision. They, uh, back up to Riverside Park, which serves as a waterway access and, uh, recreational sports fields. Uh, again, this shows the zoning. Again, this shows the zoning in the area, R1 adjacent for the school and the public park, R2 to show the limits of the Bell Tower subdivision. This is an aerial, the sites are undeveloped as of now. This is the locations plat. This is a photo of the sites running down this road that's pictured are the eight lots consecutively from the first one being the one closest to you. I'll draw your attention to the upslope at the rear of these lots. That's actually part of these lots and on this property. This is the site plan. Again, I would draw your attention to this solid black line that's running across the back of these properties. That is a retention wall to aid in producing more flat space in the backyards of these lots. However, the variance is along the front of these properties where you see the dotted lines labeled MBL for minimum building line. They're extending, not extending, but moving their, the floor plan for their houses on these lots forward about 10 feet. That is the variance request. They have explained in their narrative that these, the retaining wall will be constructed whether the variance is granted or not. They're just seeking to expand the backyard space that's usable on these lots in reference specifically to the, those upslopes that were pictured in the existing site photos. It's worth mentioning that if you see across the street up in this area, the homes across the street are part of a concurrent variance that is also seeking to move the floor plans for the houses. They're seeking to build forward 10 feet on that side, so both sides of the road will have a uniform appearance. They'll be equidistant from the right-of-way of Campana Drive at these locations. And then this is a site plan also, again, to illustrate where that upslope is across the back of those properties. And again, the variance has nothing to do with that retention wall that's gonna be placed where that upslope is. So code dictates that that retaining wall can't be taller than six feet in maximum height at any given location. And so again, the variance isn't for that, so it will have to be six feet or less in height. The only condition that we have in place for this variance, we're recommending approval with this condition, which is that the wall, even though it runs across those eight lots, has to have joints where the lot lines are. That is in pursuit, you know, that is so if there is an issue with one section of that wall across those eight lots, hopefully to mitigate the negative effects on adjacent lots and adjacent sections of the wall. If one part of the wall starts crumbling, it won't drag down the other sections of the wall with it. And so hopefully in that way, we can keep the, any issues in the future more self-contained is the reason for that condition. Hopefully, you know, of course, there are no issues, but staff's recommendation is approval with that condition.
We have anyone here that likes to speak far against this issue? You could come to my phone, please.
As for overtime. My name is Scott Holt. I live at 3139 Carol Ann Way. We're kind of in the back of this subdivision. You know, when we bought this place, we really liked this area. Lots of great subdivision, wonderful neighborhood, blessed with some neighbors. It's beautiful. You know, every, all the houses that are in there are two years. Very nice and, you know, probably the average home in theirs. Everybody's done good. I know developer have a lot of thanks for what he's done, but I have some concerns and some questions about this. You know, when we bought in there, it was zoned this with a 55-foot setbacks. When I first heard about this or saw your signs go up, I was very concerned about the property values. You know, because if you take the houses and pull them 10 feet closer on both sides of the road, I just couldn't see how that would help me and my few dollars that I got in there. So after looking at it and I see that this wall is proposed, here are my questions. Is, as part of the zoning, is there a condition in there that says there will be a wall built? That gonna happen? Or is there some workaround where we could one of those lots gets sold to a builder and that builder decide, well, I'm just gonna slide it forward and not build a wall? That's a question.
Didn't you say that?
So in the applicant's
Yes.
Effort to much flat space as possible? Planning to construct a wall with or without the variance? Variants doesn't have per Columbia County they're allowed to build a retaining wall on the properties as long as it's no more than
My question is this, in the application and in your regulation for these all made? Question to you. Wiggle room. I could buy one of those lots. I don't think I'm gonna build a wall. Or is the developer responsible for
He wants to know if it's required to be built.
Obviously, sir.
Yeah, so there's no condition that requires a wall to be built. And if they choose to build it without the wall, they can. Now, that obviously affects their usable backyard space that they're trying to create by building that wall. But there's not a condition that requires them to put that in.
Then the, what they're asking you to do, they're putting in their application that they want you to do, it's based on them building a wall.
It's, I think the variance is so that they have more flat area in the backyard.
Right.
So they're just requesting moving the setback from the front, minimum building line back.
Forward to the road 10 feet.
In the direction of the house, though, right? They're moving the whole house forward towards the
Towards the
Towards the street, 10 feet.
Question to you. The application in the drawing and in your narrative built.
I don't think
What guarantees do we have?
Yeah. Are you gonna put in? I'm sorry, sorry.
The applicant, I think, can answer that question better than anybody here on staff. I mean, that's one responsible.
Scott Holt.
Robert Titus. Robert Titus for the engineering, 886 Mill Lane. As we've stated, the purpose of building the wall and requesting just a front setback is to give a 25-foot yard, 25-foot wide backyard. While we're just trying to give a little more area for a backyard for drainage, because what's happening is coming down off the slope. It off
He understands that. He's just asking if you're gonna build a wall.
Okay.
He wants, he wants an assurance that you're gonna build a wall.
That's what he wants to know.
Yes, they're gonna build it, but if they didn't build it, they wouldn't have a backyard, a five, 10-foot
But they're gonna build it.
Yeah, they're gonna build it.
Not many people would wanna buy without a backyard.
Yeah, I mean, if you come out and step out into the slope going up 10, 15 feet, yeah. I'm with you.
Forward so we can get you on the mic. I can hear you. I can hear you, but we can hear you on the mic.
My concern is that you allow the variance. And the developer sells a lot, builder. And the builder says, I think I'm gonna save me some money and not build a wall. I'm just gonna slide my house closer, build a smaller, cheaper, more economical, have fewer dollars in it. And I'm asking you, if you're gonna approve this, like you did with a special condition, wall will be built as it was suggested to in the drawing and the application. As wall will be built. This gentleman stood here and said the wall's gonna be built either way. I'm just saying, if you don't mind, believe and trust everybody. I don't think it's too much to ask to add that as a special condition.
Let's do it.
Is that okay, sir?
I have no problem.
I'm Matt Ashwell, the developer of Bell Tower subdivision. I live at 5235 Wood Parkway. And I mean, the whole purpose of this result, or this variance is to make more of an adequate lot, so that we can keep the aesthetics of a house without having to put a front entry garage in. Back when we originally passed this neighborhood, it was quite an ordeal to get this development passed. And, you know, not to go through all that now, but one of the conditions was not to have front entry garages. These lots are shallow with that slope coming in the backside to where your really only option is to put a front entry garage if we don't move the setback forward. So I'm trying to just eliminate that. I'm trying to keep the aesthetics of the neighborhood the same. Nothing's gonna change. I'm not gonna
You're okay with the wall?
Oh, absolutely. I mean, that's the whole intent of the entire
That's all I need to know. Can we make it a part of the conditions and?
I do have a question. Is there a square foot minimum that you build in there?
The minimum by the covenants is 2,500 square feet. I don't wanna plan to change that whatsoever if, I mean, as long as we can as long as I can get the variance, that eliminates us to have to change that. So I would have to change the covenants to maybe to build a smaller house in there and also to I guess to change it to a front entry garage, because currently it's not allowed.
I think some of the concerns I'm hearing is that you're gonna build a $350,000 house like I live in when they wanna live, you know, they want their neighbors to have, you know, big six, 7,000 square foot houses like they have so they all have the same neighborhood.
Nothing will change in there. I mean, as far as like the values of the houses or the aesthetics or the way each plan is approved. I mean, there's been a lot of thought put into this project. This is kind of like my flagship project, my staple project for being a developer. And my engineer can probably speak to that as well. Like, everything that I do in there has been done very nicely and it will continue.
Let's just address the wall and then this issue will be over with.
Yes.
Yeah, we'll modify it.
Is, will the wall Yeah.
It'll be within, you know, we're not gonna go inside the 10-foot setback on the rear part of that lot, so it'll be somewhere in that basic area.
Well, the lay of the land could change that some.
Right. Right. Each lot's a little bit different, so.
Depends on the lot.
So that slope is more severe, you know, as you're at like 14 and 15, like 14, 15 area.
You can draw on the screen if it helps illustrate a little bit.
Yeah, in this area here, I mean, so these, this is a more severe area here. So obviously, we can't go back too far because of the six-foot height restriction on the wall. So, and as you come down here, you know, I think for aesthetics, I think it would look better if the wall is just straight all the way across. So that's why we engineered it this way to try to, but I can't tell you if it's gonna be six inches forward or backwards or a foot or two, maybe you may adjust once we get in the field. But I mean, it's gonna be relatively close to where it is right now.
But your intentions is it'll be straight?
Oh, yeah, that's
Are you gonna build it or
You couldn't jog the whole thing. Yeah, I'll build the whole thing.
Okay, we, fellas, we gotta move along.
Okay. Those are
Okay.
It'll be compiled.
Thank you. Thanks, Matt.
Okay, now, we gotta get back to how we're gonna make the motion for the changes. You got it?
Oh, we have more questions.
Okay. This will be the last one on this issue.
Good evening.
Evening.
Rhonda King. I live in Bell Tower. I'm 3108 Carol Ann Way. And we just moved in. We're still knee-deep in boxes, so time is of essence here. But I'd like to go on the record for myself and my husband, Michael King, as present, that we are against the variance and this is why. When we started courting Bell Tower and we could have built anywhere in Columbia County, which is where we love, we're both retired military. We love the aesthetics of Bell Tower. And so we got the covenants, read them over, went through them back and forth, had our lawyers check them out, had our realtor check them out. And it's kind of discerning that here we are, just closed on our house Friday, and now we're dealing with the variance issue for a very new subdivision. Bell Tower, for us, the aesthetics was everything. The concern now is that you're moving houses 10 feet forward, which if you, from my perspective, and I could be wrong. I mean, Matt did a great job the other night trying to show us how he would do it as a developer. There's homes in there now that have been built that is on that same strip that has that same issue. And if he's the developer that's his baby, why not get with those builders and say, hey, these are the types of houses you need to build because we have one in here that's like that already and they're not having an issue versus moving those houses, those rest of those lots forward. That's the concern. The other concern is you have either one or two lots, and I'm not really sure, because again, I've been unboxing and trying to prepare, that they did not name on this list. Why not? They're on that same strip.
It's on the, it's a different variance.
So
Another variance.
Are you talking on the same side of the
Same road, right?
Yes, same strip.
Hold on, I think, I think it's, is it on the same side of the road or are you talking on the opposite side of the
On the opposite side of the
Okay, so that's a separate application which will be handled after this one is
So then the other question becomes, we approve this, you guys approve this, are they coming on around the lane to the back part of the neighborhood and bringing those well forward too? So we're, we're now, it's just discerning that this is a new subdivision. The developer developed this. He knows how the lots and the lay of the land, the topography looks. Why did we approve this in the first place? Did we just say, oh, you know what, we'll get some people in there, get it started, and then I'll go and ask for variances? Because now we've came in under false pretenses. I get everything changes. I get that we can ask and change things, but so early in the game, that's really concerning.
So, and I can't speak for the builder. I drove down there today.
Understand.
And the road, the houses, guys, probably have to answer this question. From what I saw, like, it's, the houses are really nice in there.
Very.
Oh, they've done a really good job. And it looks like these are a little bit smaller in the entrance way than in the back. They're beautiful homes back there. But I did notice that some of the, some of the backyards were on that slope. So I'm gonna guess that's kind of why this variance came up.
It is, but it was also known prior to.
Sure.
So then why not make or decide, hey, we know we have this issue. Let's plan to utilize it best way possible, but not have people that are already in there come in under false pretenses. Because we don't want it to look like roll houses. When you start, we love the wideness of the roads.
Ma'am, let's let him address that issue. We can't answer that for you.
I understand your question.
It's, you know, we built a million-dollar house and it needs to stay, we want the aesthetics of that neighborhood to stay that way.
I think that's what they're trying to do. Go ahead, sir.
I think, yes, that's my intention. I mean, that's what I've been trying to do from day one. When this project was passed back in the day, the buffers were, you know, even on like the River Chase side, there's a 30-foot buffer on that side, which at the time wasn't something standard, but it was something I kind of had to relinquish in order to get this thing passed. And then since we passed this project and been out here working, we have been struggling with these lots to get anything to work. There's probably been at least eight contracts, eight deals that have been on the table. I think it's more like 10 now with the other two lots. And everybody backs out of it because you can't, nobody can get anything that's decent to make work. I mean, if you have, by the time you put your house in there, I mean, most of your average boxes on your house are into the like two feet of the back of that slope. So number one, you have to put a retaining wall in, but even if you do, on that slope, you're picking up about two feet per vertical foot. So by the time you do the math, I mean, you might end up with, you know, seven or eight, 10 feet at the most backyard once you walk out of your house and you don't wanna look at a retaining wall that's, you know, basically right in your face. So I don't think that, you know, the values of those, if we keep it the way it is, I think that hurts the neighborhood. What I'm trying to do is actually keep the aesthetics, not do a front entry garage. Because I understand you're, what you guys are concerned about is the, you know, moving the houses forward, maybe crowding the street. But think about it this way, if, so if we didn't do that and I had to change the covenants to allow a front entry garage, So, I mean, just as a developer, I think it's, this is the best way to do it, in my opinion. I mean, I've created this from, you know, from its original concept, so I mean, I just feel like this is the route to go, and if everybody would just be patient, I think you're gonna like the end result, honestly. It's gonna be, it's gonna be nice and be cohesive with the rest of the neighborhood. I'm not gonna let any track builders in here.
And I guess, if I've understood her question correctly, is, why was this a forethought?
Absolutely.
That's, I, I think that's what they're looking for.
Well, because this was part of the, I guess, the way it was passed, like, I was even, before we did it, like, with this variance, I actually called Scott, and I said, you know, "With that 15-foot buffer that's up there on top of the hill, there's already a park there with additional property that's up there. I tried to acquire that from Parks and Recreation, and that deal kinda fell through at the last minute." So, our original intention was is to have, we were gonna have a lot more depth on these, and like I said, that, that, we actually had it under contract, and it fell through at the last minute. So, we had, this was what we had left at the last minute to deal with. So, it was either we deal with this, or we don't get it.
It sounds like to me that, and I understand everything you're saying, ma'am, by the way, but it sounds like to me, if we don't grant this buffer moving forward, everything looks bad.
Correct.
So, at this point, I, without looking at it on the ground, I don't see a heck of a lot of options.
I understand. You got caught between a rock and a hard spot.
Correct.
When I drove down there, I was like, "I sure hope they build something nice in here." It looks kinda bad.
And I think there's, if we don't do this, I think those lots will be vacant for the next decade, couple decades, probably. I just don't think anybody's gonna, I mean, unless you build something super, super small, but then that hurts the overall value, so...
I talked to a builder that, that he was gonna deal with you, and he was talking about building like a $700,000 house on one.
Right.
Passing it on what he said, to God's information. And he's a good builder. I guess I better hush without any more knowledge than I've got of that.
Right.
Ma'am, did you want us to have something to say?
I'll be quick.
Okay.
I'm going to the mic first. Big white house in the back of the neighborhood, and we spent over a million on our house. And, you know, we came in here under the pretense that the neighborhood was gonna be a particular way and look a particular way, and the values were gonna go up, and the values have gone up. The problem is, and I understand what he's dealing with, what I need somebody to explain to me is how a development, at this stage of the game, now realizes it can't fit a house on the lot, when I've already bought into it, spent the money, and on my back end, they're looking at doing a variance in the future, for the same problem that you get when you come in the neighborhood. So, that's my issue.
But, would you, and that's fair, but would you want them to build, he could build the house, say he builds the house, and you have no backyard, would you want that look?
Well, we have a house there, the Green family, and they have a side yard. It depends on the lot. I understand the dilemma. We had a neighborhood meeting a couple of days ago. I understand what he's up against. The problem that my husband and I are trying to wrap our heads around is that this neighborhood didn't just pop up a year ago. All these lots went through the process of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Everybody had to know how big it was. And when you hear 2,500 square feet, I like to go on the record and ask you to up that to at least 3,000 square feet, because if you do that, do the math, at $240 a square foot, we're gonna get homes in there at a lower price value, and whatever I have is gonna go this way. They will.
I think that's what he's trying to avoid.
Because we have more lots in the front and the backside that are gonna get the variance. So, that's a point I wanted to make tonight.
I think that's what he's trying to avoid by what you just said.
No, we'll still get that.
You won't get the lower property values if he does it right.
Gotta remember, a house is gonna be less attractive when it has a smaller backyard.
But, that's what he's trying to fix.
And they'll be smaller. So, the price point is gonna be less than what we have in there right now, and it's also gonna be, from my house to another big house at the end of the road in the back, is where you said you might have to request a variance, right? In the future.
It's something that works.
Right. It's probably gonna happen, because we have the wall there, too.
But, you live in a much bigger house, right?
Right. I had to get two lots.
Well, my point is, is that's why the values on those, I mean, I live on a, on a road that has a million, million and a half, $600,000 and $750,000. It's about, it's about right, and they're neither one of, they're standing on their own, you know, value.
Not always true. We moved here from Virginia...
There's always exceptions to everything.
It's a possibility. It's slim, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna tell you why. We moved here from Virginia. My husband works at Fort Gordon.
I can't say anything about Virginia.
Well, no, I'm gonna tell you, we've been...
Anything goes there.
But, my point is, we've been through this with two multi-million dollar neighborhoods, and we've lost. So, I know what this looks like. I understand the position that he's in. What I can't wrap my head around is how is this now coming up as an issue, when the neighborhood, how long's the neighborhood been here? Four, five years?
It's poor planning.
The...
I mean, the lots have already been scoped out. You had to have known what would fit there.
Well, I agree with that.
So, I bought into a neighborhood that was marketed a certain way. This is, this is what I'm trying to tell you, and I'm thinking, "Hey, this, we're, all the rest of the houses are gonna be like this." They're already starting to change, so that's our concern. I thank you for letting me say that.
So, the issue is, do we, for this, do we pass a variance or not? And, and we try to help you, but this would, in my mind, this would actually help you? I mean, there is no other option, right?
Only way to help is to pass a variance.
I don't think you're gonna get a bigger backyard, whether you have a side load or a front load, are you? You're not.
Those are only 90 feet wide. You can't do a side yard with setbacks and a side entry garage. It won't work.
Right. So, if I had my preference, it would to be, it would be to keep it the same as the rest of the neighborhood. I understand his position. My problem is, this is like, this has just come up as some new problem, when the neighborhood has been developed for several years. And then I would've thought twice about this, about moving in here, because of what we spent and how the rest of the houses are gonna be priced.
Understand completely.
Okay. Thank you.
We've had 10 attempts to try to make something work there. It's not like we just, all of a sudden, realized that we had something that wasn't workable. Like, we knew it was gonna be tight, and we tried to make it work, but had 10 deals fall through. Can't make it work.
I wish we had known that, or we bought in there, because we...
But, since you bought in, I've still continued to try to make it work.
Right, but all the prime, but all the prime lots are basically built out, and we're left with what's on the straightaway and the back by me. So, that, that's my concern.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir.
I'm Zach Kofoglis. I live at 740 Campana, which is along this, there's one lot between this particular variance and my house at the bottom of the hill there, you will probably saw on the left. I've got the smallest backyard. I love my house. So, it's less to mo. We did meet with Matt. There are a few of us that are in support of both variances. And Colin Garstag is another neighbor that couldn't be here tonight and asked me to tell you that he was in support of it. I mean, if I had any special condition, it would be that you go ahead and add on that to approve these, there will be no garage-facing houses. And, because otherwise, he's still in control, he can still change the covenants, he could still, even with the variance, build a garage-facing house.
He would make a lot less size of that, though.
He would. But, I mean, and I know, and I have to, he did tell us all this. I know there's some issues with trust and that sort of thing, and I think you all see this a lot. But, this is what I've seen Matt trying to do, the fact that there has been, we could've had maybe four or five of these already built out, if we didn't have this problem. So, just wanted to let you, you know, I respect all my neighbors. We've got a great neighborhood, and all they respect me, and we're in disagreement on this. But, what we all want to do, our property values are protected, and we've got the nicest neighborhood possible.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate your time.
Hello, my name is Philip Tully, and I've built one custom home in Bell Tower. I'm sorry, I reside at 241 Mountain Olive Lake. I own the two lots, coming in Campana, six and seven, maybe, I think, on the right side of the road. We had every intention at the end of the year, we went in there, put up silt fence, got our permits, we're gonna put in two really nice basement houses, consisting of about 5,300 square foot heated each, with a projected sale price of 850 to 895. Depends on how the upgrades, depends on where they finish out. We have since reserved a lot on the other side of the road, which is maybe 18 or 19, that my son's gonna build in there. So, we've got every opportunity, as Matt spoke of. I've got vested interest in there. I'm not a track builder. I'm not a volume builder. I build two or three houses a year. That's all I wanna do. I don't do it to make money. I do it to, because I enjoy building. I wanna try to put out a nice product. Unfortunately, with the downslope on the left side of the road here, and the back slope going downhill on the right side of the road, this bank is probably taking up 20 to 30 feet with the incline from the rear pins to the usable flat spot that you can build a house on, which, as Matt pointed out, the left side of the road, you're gonna have a six or seven-foot backyard. I addressed all this. This is all because of me going to Matt, going to Robert, and asking and saying, "Hey, we laid out our first house with the intention of getting the basement dug out," and I'm standing on the back porch looking down a hill. There was no backyard. There were two little 10-foot, you know, indentions past the porch where you could have about a 10- or 12-foot backyard on either side of the porch. Excuse me. I asked him, I said, "Is there any way, we are doing, obviously, what we call courtyard entrances on the right side of the road, so, you know, with the house, with the setbacks being moved up 10 feet, we're talking 31 feet from the back of the curb to just the front of the garage. The main body of the house is still gonna be 25, 26 feet further back."
But, you're in favor of it.
I'm absolutely in favor. I'm, I'm the one that requested it, because, A, I wanna put in a nice product. I, I moved, after 25 years, I moved out of a neighborhood because of small yards. And that's fine. Some people love that. I want space. I think that people are paying this kinda money for a nice house, wanna have some outdoor living area, which is a decent backyard, whether you've got young kids, dogs, you know, you just like being out in nature. I don't know. Both sides of the house, I mean, on the road, excuse me, have great potential, and these lots will be consumed very quickly, because, and I don't wanna say this the wrong way, we had a few builders, or Matt had a few builders come in there, where the man that just previously spoke was not ultimately, they were not concerned about a backyard. And you look at the house you said you saw, I think it may be the man that just spoke, where he said he's got the smallest yard in the neighborhood, and that's fine. Some people don't want a yard. Me personally, I want a backyard. That's all I wanna say. So, thank y'all.
Okay. Thank you all. Now, do we have a motion to accept or deny?
All right. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve modified condition, file VA 23-04-01, variance to reduce the front setbacks to 45 feet from the center line for the lots at 722 through 736 Campana Way.
Have a second.
Oh, modified to include a...
Retaining wall.
Retaining wall.
Hey, now's our second.
Second.
All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Now, the next one is very, very similar to the south side of the street, Ms. Montgomery.
Yes, sir. This second one is also a request for a variance to Section 90-53, which is the list of lot and structure requirements. This is for the opposite side of the road, 721 to 731 Campana Drive. This is in the Bell Tower subdivision on the north side of Hardy McManus Road, and is currently zoned R2. That zoning was approved in 2015. It did have several zoning conditions. None of those are impacted by this variance request. This is the area of these sites, they are currently undeveloped. And the existing site conditions, so you can see the slope on these properties, so they do slope down from the road here, and then there is the level space behind that slope, and then they continue sloping at the back of the properties. This is the final plat of the property. This was approved in 2017, and you can see the six lots impacted by this variance request on the right side of the road. There are wetlands and state waters behind the lot, and that's effectively open space for the neighborhood. That's not developable area. This was the initial site, so obviously, the site did have some slope initially. You can see kinda the high point and the slope down to those environmental areas. With the development of the site, they did grade the road in and create kinda the stair-step effect that we see with the slope at the edge of the property to the flat portion in the road, and then, you know, the flat level spot to the slope down, another step, and slope down at the back of these lots. Kinda shows how that development happened, how that grading changed with development of the subdivision. So, these are the existing lots on the right side of the road, and said, they do slope down from the road. And as mentioned, a couple of them do have land disturbance permits in place, so they do have the silt fence in place as part of that process. So, these are the approved permits for those two lots, so they do have grading plans already, and one does already have a building permit in place, and that does suggest that the lots are buildable. There is a house plan that did, you know, fit, although, as the builder mentioned, it may not be as, you know, preferred layout, and may want more backyard space, but the house was able to be permitted within the current setbacks. For reference, for some of the questions, and he did mention the square footage earlier, it is a total of about 7,200 square feet under roof, so it is certainly not a small house by any means. The intention for this side of the road is to build side-loading garages, and there are all gonna be basement lots, so they're all gonna have the basement there built into the slope. With this side of the road, it is the same request to reduce the front setback by 10 feet, but in this case, with the house layout, it is essentially just the garage that's gonna be in front of the normal setback. The bulk of the house is actually going to meet the normal building requirement. This doesn't impact the ability to meet the zoning conditions, which did require a minimum of 20 feet between the back of the sidewalk and the garage. That's very easily accomplished still with this request. So, this does show the required setback, the 55 feet, and then that reduction to the We have seen, we have seen some other similar requests. We did recently approve a house in another development in February this year, to let them pull the house closer to the road, essentially just allowing the garage within the front setback to help them deal with slopes on that property. We've also done variances for backyard purposes, primarily for retaining walls. In this case, they are requesting to move the house instead, but it's for a similar purpose, to create more level backyard space. So, while they don't necessarily need the variance per se, the approved building permit does demonstrate that lots likely are buildable without the variance, there's also not really any detriment to moving these homes forward. They're still able to comply with the zoning conditions, they're still gonna have adequate space for, you know, vehicle parking off the roads, so they're not gonna impact the public safety or the public roadway, and therefore, staff is recommending approval.